10th, 2018 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the school board on matters concerning the operation of Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Meyer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Superintendent Meyer, would you would like to introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening?
Oh, my goodness, yes. As Principal Brown of North Marion High School and one of the students from North Marion High, Elizabeth Kinnard, come up to the podium, I would like to read a note that we received with a donation. It's one of the donations that the board will be approving this evening. You'll notice on the list that will be read later that there is a $1,000 donation to North Marion High School from an anonymous donor. We received this note along with the donation. It says, "Dear Elizabeth Kinnard, when I was your age, college was a dream to me but impossible. When I was 36 years old, a good man gave me the funds to go to college. Now I've been blessed many years later to help another woman, you. Please use the enclosed and God bless you as you realize your dream," from a friend. And I'll pass this down for you to look at the note. So I wanted them to come tonight to share a little bit about the background of this awesome story.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Meyer, and Attorney Gibbs, good evening. I'm Elizabeth Brown, the principal at North Marion High School. This evening, I would like to introduce one of our outstanding students from North Marion High, Elizabeth Kennard. When Elizabeth was just six years old, her mother was in a severe automobile accident caused by a drunk driver. Due to the force of the impact, Elizabeth's mom was dramatically injured with numerous broken bones. As a young child, Elizabeth didn't understand the magnitude of the injury, but did completely understand that the surgeon who treated her mom performed the miracle of fixing her mom and saved her life. As Elizabeth's grandmother, who is also in the audience today with her mom, stepped in to raise the children and also take care of Elizabeth's mom, Elizabeth never forgot her admiration for the medical professionals that healed her mother during that time. Currently, Elizabeth is a graduating senior with a 4.7 GPA, an ACT score of a 31, and is an ACE diploma candidate. I'm also very pleased to announce that she will be attending Harvard University in the fall. Of course, her major is going to be neuroscience with the goal of becoming a neurosurgeon. It is my very humble honor to invite to the podium our 2018 North Marion High School graduate and prestigious member of the 2018 freshman class of Harvard University, Ms. Elizabeth Kennard.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Kennard. Will everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. From a very young age, I always had a firm grasp on what I wanted as my future. Though I didn't know exactly what I wanted until recently, I knew how I wanted my life to be in general. I knew I wanted to go into medicine since I was about six years old, a desire that would breed within me for the next 11 years. What started out as a fascination for medicine and the concept of putting back together something that had been broken quickly turned into a desire to make a career out of helping people in need. I believe this came from me observing my grandmother and all of the selfless things she has done for our family. Seeing her take care of her three grandchildren while her daughter fought for her life made me realize my passion for helping people. Because of her, I was able to realize my goals and do everything I could to achieve them, as well as adopt a mindset that would help me succeed throughout my school career. Looking back on my years as a Marion County Public School student, I also see how my teachers worked with me every day to prepare for my future. I will be attending Harvard University in the fall, and I am humbled to be the first student from North Marion High School in over 25 years to be attending an Ivy League school. From Evergreen Elementary to North Marion Middle School, I see the seeds that have been planted in me from a young age that encourage me to strive for success. In middle school, Mr. Malanson never allowed me to be mediocre, and Dr. Lockley truly inspired my love for math. Attending North Marion High School gave me an opportunity to be a part of a tight-knit community in which I could reach my full potential as a student. I received insurmountable support from administrative staff as Ms. Spencer helped to alleviate so many concerns I had about applying for college and even helped me in the process. And Ms. Stover helped me in all my moments of great stress. The students at North Marion are also extremely supportive of one another, and specifically in the ACE program, we help each other to do our best, never leaving anyone behind. The ACE program has exposed me to challenging coursework and so many teachers that have worked diligently to prepare me for my post-secondary education while also giving me time to give back to my community through extracurricular activities. Being a part of clubs like Health Occupation Students of America, National Honor Society, and Academic Team have not only taught me what it means to be a leader, but it has also encouraged me to connect with people that may differ from me in background and aspirations. I have made sure to utilize these resources provided for me in order to excel, and I hope that the opportunities that have been granted to me will allow me to pay it forward in the future. Maya Angelou once said, "When we give cheerfully and accept gratefully, everyone is blessed." These words bring very true within me, and I sincerely hope that I will one day be able to help others in the same way that the people around me, whether it be family or teachers, have helped me. I am thoroughly grateful for the support and opportunities that have been granted to me during my time at North Marion High School, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my story with all of you today.
Thank you. Elizabeth, where's Mom and Grandma? Mom and Grandma, can you stand up? Elizabeth, we wish you all the very best and hope that you will consider coming back to Marion County to practice medicine. Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck.
Good luck, Amy.
At this time, I would like to introduce our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Helen Hotelane, who would like to share some words with us and address the board and the public. Thank you.
That is a really hard act to follow. First, I want to thank the school board for allowing me to speak this evening. Imagine the following moment in an elementary classroom life. Students are seated, holding a new book by a popular author with interesting illustrations. They lean forward in anticipation as the teacher introduces the book. Then the students begin to read and discuss in small groups. All around the room, you hear the buzz of students working. I believe that this is the vision we all have for what is going on in every elementary classroom in Marion County. Now imagine how the scenario changes and student anticipation withers if instead of a good book, the students are given a dull passage with FSA-style questions. After a brief introduction to the standard, the students are directed to read the passage and respond to the FSA-style questions. Then students are grouped by who incorrectly responded to the questions. After remediation session on the standard, the students are given another monotonous passage to practice the standards that they have not yet mastered. For far too many students, that second scenario has become the reality of their education here in Marion County. The lower the school's test scores last year, the more likely that they are being taught with wearisome passages and FSA-style questions to improve their reading. It is so highly recommended that teachers are apprehensive of embarking on creative activities that do not directly correlate to the FSA standards. We all want our children to learn to read, to enjoy reading, and even do well on the assessments. The question is, which scenario will accomplish that goal? The International Literacy Association publishes current research on the best ways to accomplish the goal of developing lifelong learners and readers. The research indicates that the latter scenario of using spiritless passages and FSA-style questions will not accomplish that goal. I ask you to consider the children and what is best for them. They need exposure to quality texts so they can grow to love learning and look forward to coming to school. What child can look forward to more tiresome passages and FSA-style questions? The emphasis on preparing for the FSA has become a year of drudgery. I'm asking you to lead us back toward learning to read and reading to learn, rather than reading to pass the FSA. Thank you.
You, Ms. Hotelane. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 10, 2018, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included is part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
A move.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Oh, sorry. I was writing on the vote and I hadn't voted. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 22, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
A move.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? Or are there additions and corrections? If not, all those in favor, please vote aye. Did it pass? 5-0. Motion passed at 5-0. Mr. Ken McAtier, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will introduce the representative from the Florida Citizens Alliance who has a special recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Ms. Flotketter, Ms. Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs. With me this evening, I have Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Holly Gerlock, and our Coordinator of Special Programs/Instructional Materials, Ms. Crystal Sizmar. We are here this evening to welcome three members of the Florida Citizens Alliance, Local Advisory Board Member, Mr. Ed Wilson, and Managing Directors, Mr. Keith Flaw and Pastor Rick Stevens. They would come up. They are here to present award from this organization, for their organization, to the Marion County Public Schools. So I'm going to turn the podium over to them.
Thank you, members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. The Florida Citizens Alliance is a grassroots organization just made up of regular people, moms and dads, grandparents, residents of Florida, people who care about children and want children to succeed in their school experience. We focus particularly on K-12 education, and we know that there are all kinds of struggles that school boards go through, that schools try to overcome. What we have decided to do is we try to find solutions to those struggles and to recognize when people make progress in the right direction. So we're really pleased to be here tonight to present to you the first-ever leadership award that the Florida Citizens Alliance has ever presented. And to read the specific citation, I would like to introduce Keith Flaw to present the
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. My name again is Keith Flaw, one of the founding directors of Florida Citizens Alliance. Florida Citizens Alliance recognizes the ongoing efforts of Marion County Public Schools to continuously improve the education of the students of Marion County, Florida, and that education that they're receiving. Marion County has taken the initiative to improve the instructional materials of our children, of our children, using and exercising local control of the textbook selection process. We want to celebrate your courage, your determination, commitment, and leadership in fully implementing your own textbook selection process. And we want to thank the board, the superintendent, the administration, and those in particular who served on the education committees. Please continue to use the Florida Citizens Alliance as a resource to help you improve Florida's public education system on the local and state levels. On behalf of over 80 members that support the Florida Citizens Alliance across the entire state and our over 20,000 supporting members, Florida Citizens Alliance presents to the school board of Marion County and the superintendent, administration, and committee members our first-ever educational leadership award for 2018. Ms. Sizmar?
With great pleasure, we want to thank you for your leadership in this effort and
And in closing, I said this at a work session, but I want to say it again today. Thanks to Dr. Meyer, Dr. Grantham, Dr. Hamm for their leadership, and the board for their support through this process. This is a new process that we continually tweak, but it's a process that you came up with in May, and we had to kind of fill in the blanks, and we've worked very hard to try to make sure that it becomes a process that everyone can participate. We look forward to how we're going to improve it as we move forward in years to come. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, CFO, and Susan Johnson, Supervisor of Food Services, would like to recognize the Food Services Department's successful administrative review of national school lunch and breakfast program.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Meyer, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, Ms. Flotketter, and Attorney Gibbs. This is a wonderful opportunity to not only acknowledge Mrs. Susan Johnson, who has been our food service supervisor since 2011. She came in at an opportune time for us. She brought a lot of experience from working with the state, and also was required to implement the new Healthy Kids Hunger-Free Act. I believe I said it wrong, but she was responsible for implementing that program. The free and reduced lunch has increased. We have more children eating and more children eating healthy food. And so it gives me a great pleasure to not just introduce her to you, but present to you, Mrs. Johnson, as well as some of the food service managers and her administrative staff, to talk a little bit about the administrative review. The saying, "To whom much is given, much is required," is definitely true for the food service department. They receive a lot of federal funding, and they are accountable for not only making sure portions are correct, but also that the particular portions are given to children, that they receive the right mix of food, and that we are feeding children breakfast and lunch and snack, and that we are following all those federal guidelines. But I just wanted to publicly acknowledge all the hard work that not only her staff has put in, but also that she has put in. So I'd like to present her to you tonight to talk to you about the latest administrative review that our school district was under. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, Ms. Dr. Meyer, Mrs. Lopez, Ms. Flotketter, and Attorney Gibbs. Marion County Public Schools participates in the United States Department of Agriculture National School Lunch and School Breakfast Programs. By participating in these programs, we provide nutritious meals to students attending our schools. Every three years, the Department, the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Division of Food, Nutrition, and Wellness conducts a review of the food service programs to make sure that we operate within the limits of federal regulations. This past January, the Florida Department of Agriculture visited six schools and the Food Service District Office. I am excited to share that our schools and the Food Service District Office had no errors. The next program review will be conducted sometime in the year 2021. Teamwork and leadership played an important part in the success of the review. Our food service managers and assistant managers do a great job overseeing program compliance and leading employees at their schools. Our area managers provide tools, support, and guidance to help with the success of the program. Please help me in recognizing the managers of the six schools that were audited and members of our district food service office. With us tonight, we have Epi McGlara, who is our manager at Emerald Shores, Cheryl Hawkins, our manager at Evergreen.
Bring him up here. Bring him up so we...
Yeah, listen. I just took y'all's picture for my Facebook page.
Yeah, come up front. Turn around.
Turn it so we can...
Yeah, yeah, turn around, turn around. Now turn around so we can see.
Dina Fiorello and Debbie Connolly, the manager and assistant manager at Eighth Street MTI. Deborah Haley, our manager at Fort McCoy Schools. Marie Aiken, who took the lead to be our manager at Legacy. Patty Free, our manager at Reddick Collier. These are our managers in our schools that really helped to make our program successful. Every day, they are giving their heart to our students, and we applaud them for the hard work that they've done. Our district office, we're recognizing Tammy Alvarez, our dietitian. Area managers, Heather McClinton and Ramona Belcher. Some of our other area managers are actually off at a training session, so they couldn't be here with us tonight. Again, thank you for your support and recognition of the school food service program.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank all of you for your hard work and for taking care of our kids and feeding them so they can learn, that brain power with food, so they have the opportunity to learn well. So, Mr. James? Y'all turn around, Mr. James wants to talk.
No, I just, I just wanted to say, Ms. Johnson, if you waved your hand again, you'd probably clean out the whole audience. Food service and the job that y'all do at our schools are tremendous. And when I say that, at one point, we only provided lunch. Now we provide breakfast and all of that, and usually, when a kid walk into your school in the morning, they have not eaten breakfast, and you all provide it, and y'all do a thorough job. And I just wanted to say this to you, and I've been wanting to say this for a long time. Do y'all know y'all serve more students in an hour than McDonald do all day? And I just want you to know, and it's always done with such efficiency and such love. And again, one of my little pet things, and the thing I hate most about some of the stuff y'all did, is y'all took away the person that could cook cinnamon rolls. I just... So I just want y'all to know that. The years that I was there, I really enjoyed good cinnamon rolls when I went to your school. And I wanted to let that Reddick know y'all did do a good job down there, probably before you guys. So thanks again for all the students that you guys serve, because it really means a lot to us and to their parents and to our community. Thank you for your job well done.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Hamm?
Chairman McCall, Board Members, Madam Superintendent. You know that there are thousands of people who make this school district work, and on the operations side, we have people like Mrs. Johnson and her team who really deliver every single day. And she talked about teamwork and leadership, and I want to focus on leadership, because, while she had her people up there for the picture, Susan Johnson makes this work. And Susan, I want to give you one of my deputy superintendent coins.
Thank you.
And recognize your performance. My job is easy because of people like Susan Johnson.
Thank you. Dr. Hamm? Dr. Hamm, Ms. Boynton has something to say to you.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Do you remember when everybody from the school board, we went to many of the schools just so we could look at the lunches? And it was such a wonderful time for all of us. We went out to, I went to Vanguard and went to...
Westport.
We went to everyone just to, even I went to Evergreen, too, and the school, the parents, I think one evening, the parent, they had a parent time, and the parents came, and I said, "Well, I was going to eat it," you know, and I said, "Ah." I was sitting right by the time they went out and looking around, I was still wanting to eat some more at school because it was so good, you know? I said, "Wow, you have done us a wonderful time for our students and for all the parents." Thank you, okay?
Ms. Stacy?
Hey, Ms. Johnson. By the way, I took y'all's picture so I can fit on my Facebook page because y'all are just great. And I have a lot of parents on my Facebook, and they'll appreciate the fact that we recognize the people that, when our children are going through the lines, I know when I grew up and I went through the lunchroom line, it was kind of like I was looking at a grandma, you know? It was somebody's grandma or somebody's mom, but it just gave me such a warm feeling. The lunchroom lady, she just, she was just was like a mama. And so it was nice, you know, nice, nice memories. And such nice memories when we went to the schools and, like Ms. Boynton said, where, you know, you fed us all lunch, and we had such a good time, and while you were there, while you had us there, you had us hogtied. You took us further and showed us things you wanted in your kitchens and stuff. So, you know, it's like, "You're an opportunist." And so you grabbed us and took us around and showed us other things, and I learned a lot about that North Marion kitchen while we were there. So thank you for teaching me that, because you knew you had us, and you fed us, and you're like, "Okay, now, we have to, we have to do a little tour here." So thank you so much, and we all love you to death.
Thank you.
We all do. Thank you.
Ms. King?
So, Ms. Johnson, everyone else had to speak, and before, this morning, I mean, before the meeting, I was like, "Oh, we probably won't talk much today," because we love to talk to Ms. Johnson about food. And so sorry we didn't get you out as quick as you probably want to, but I just want to tell you, thank you for doing an outstanding job, and you do such a wonderful job with our students, but you guys also did an excellent job just a few months ago when Hurricane Irma came through, and you guys ran it efficiently for our community, for our state, and it just goes beyond and shows what you guys are really made of. So I thank you, and I look forward to our conversation about the pre-K white milk. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Meyer?
The detail that your staff puts into the display of the food just blew... The detail that your staff puts into the display of the food just blew me away when I visited the schools. And I had the opportunity to not only visit, but to help serve. That is quite, yes, just the detail and the multitasking that goes on. But while they're serving, and they're also having the great conversations with the students, like Ms. Stacy had mentioned, that, you know, they become friends with those students. And I know that quite a few of your staff have stepped up to help us in situations and protect our kids and be their advocates. And so, your staff is so much more than just that stereotypical lunch lady. They are heroes as well. And as Ms. King mentioned, you know, during the hurricane, and I was helping at the Donellen Shelter, and so, I was in the kitchen. And even as I was spraying the dishes down after I had washed them, because they wouldn't let me near cooking, I said, "I will not cook, but I will do dishes." But even the detail in how you sanitize and all those, I mean, there's so much that goes on. And as they said, kudos to all of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Joanne Crowder, Fine Arts Program Specialist, would like to recognize the Ocala Civic Theater and Ocala Symphony Orchestra for the grant-funded school programs.
Good evening, Board Chair Ms. McCall, Vice Chair Ms. Boynton, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Mayor, Ms. Flockheder, and Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs, and guests. This evening, we are recognizing two of our community partners for the excellent programs they offer to the Marion County Public School students. Mary Britt is the Executive Director of the Ocala Civic Theater, and Pamela Calero is the Executive Director of the Riley Arts Center and the Ocala Symphony Orchestra. And they offer programs to our schools and students through outreach grants that they secure through their organizations. I'd like to first introduce Ms. Pamela Calero. She is a graduate of Forest High School. She earned her bachelor's degree in public relations and a master's in business administration. She currently serves as a board member for the Pace Center for Girls and is an active member of Junior League of Ocala and the Ocala Municipal Arts Commission. She is also former chairwoman of the Young Professionals of Ocala. Pamela is passionate about all fine arts and welcomes the opportunity to actively provide access to performing arts for everyone in our community. Ms. Pam Calero.
Thank you. I didn't, that's a great intro. Good evening. Thank you first for the opportunity to share the fun work that we're doing over at the Ocala Symphony and the Riley Arts Center, especially tonight as it pertains to our youth programming, which I love. Before we talk about youth programming, I wanted to share with you where the Ocala Symphony and Riley Arts Center are at right now, if you haven't been following us for the past few years. So, in October of 2015, we opened the Riley Arts Center. This came after a two-year capital campaign where we raised $2.9 million and restored the historic city auditorium in Tuscaloosa Park. Since opening two and a half years ago, we've held more than 200 events and entertained more than 80,000 guests for concerts such as orchestra, rock, ballet, and live theater. We're also a place for community events, fundraisers, and original productions by original artists. While the Riley and the OSO seek to entertain guests of all ages, we have made it a dedicated mission to provide opportunities for our students to experience music and the benefit music education has in their lives. So, we have the Symphony for Schools program that's been around for about eight years. This program sends professional OSO musicians into each of Marion County's public elementary schools. We coordinate with music teachers to bring their classes a 30-minute presentation on how music works, sound works, the importance of music, and we usually play anything from Mozart to Moana. So, we try to connect with our audience. This, of course, is done at no charge to our schools. And during the 2016-17 year, we were able to reach 22 elementary schools and approximately 2,200 students. This is a great, great program that we've been able to grow throughout the years, and it's one of, one of the things that we look forward to programming each season. One thing that Joanne's been really helping me out with this past year is our open rehearsals. Now, the open rehearsals are something that are completely new to the Ocala Symphony Orchestra, but is a normal model in a lot of communities. So, a normal Ocala Symphony Orchestra concert weekend, on a Friday night, we have a rehearsal, and then on Saturday and Sunday, the orchestra performs. So, that Friday night is really crucial for the conductor and our musicians to connect and learn from each other and really perfect those pieces. So, we invite our middle and high school students in Marion County to come. They have a couple slices of pizza, grab a Coke, they come sit in the city, in the Riley, in the auditorium, and they get to have this experience for free. What's really fun is a lot of our students at that age, they're in their band at middle school or in high school, or they're in a youth symphony. And so, they're learning how to play flute, violin. And so, that's a really cool opportunity for them during the breaks to go up to our principal violinist and say, "Hey, how did you get here? How did you, you do this? How much did you practice?" And what's really cool is the response that we've gotten from our middle and high school teachers. They, a lot of times, will accompany their students. This Friday is our last open rehearsal of the season, and I have one of our teachers who actually formed a field trip to come and bring 23 of their students. Through these programs, we're not looking to create everyone to be a musician, but we want people who are passionate about music to know that they can pursue that, and then if not, to just be passionate about music and see how it affects them academically, how it affects them personally, and how they can integrate it into their lives. And as I tell all of our teachers when we meet with them, we just want the Ocala Symphony to be a resource for you. What's been wonderful is that I've seen, you know, the increase. We're bringing back a lot of our arts programming in our schools, but we want to continue to help supplement where we can. And then, I just want to say a couple of thank yous while I'm up here. I want to thank the school board and Superintendent Heidi Mayor for prioritizing the arts and creating this position Joanne has. She's been instrumental in really helping me connect with the teachers, get opportunities out there for free tickets, cool concerts, so that they know we're here. I also want to thank Karen Blinkhorn. She's at Sunrise Elementary School. She's been awesome the past three years, really helping me know when should we email teachers, when should we not, who to email, helping me navigate that. And then, of course, I really want to thank Marion County Public Schools, all the teachers, for working with us and giving us the opportunity to come into the classrooms and continue to grow this program. Thank you so much. Are there any questions? No, thank you very much.
It's my pleasure to introduce Mary Britt, who has been on staff at Ocala Civic Theater since 1987 and is currently serving as the Executive Director. Ms. Britt's a Florida native and a Gator. Ms. Britt serves on the Board of the Florida Theater Conference, is a past president of the American Association of Community Theater, and remains active at state and national levels. She has been appointed to serve on grant review panels by the Florida Division of Cultural Affairs and has served as a theater adjudicator at state, regional, and national festivals. In 2013, Ms. Britt was awarded the Art Cole Lifetime of Leadership Award by the American Association of Community Theater. Locally, Ms. Britt currently serves on the Ocala Municipal Arts Commission and the SunTrust Bank Local Board of Directors, and also served for several years on the Board of the Marion Cultural Alliance, a true Ocala treasure, Ms. Mary Britt.
Thank you. You know you're getting old when they start calling you a treasure. Oh, gosh. Thank you very much for allowing us to take a few minutes tonight to talk to you about what Ocala Civic Theater is doing with our school students. I understand that most of the issues that you review have a budget item tied to it, and since the symphony and the theater and the Appleton Museum and the ballet all do things with the schools that they don't charge for, a lot of times, you're not aware of those. And so, we just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to kind of let you know a little bit about what we're doing. I did bring a handout, which I know needs, now, needs to be reviewed before you get it, but the numbers will all be in the handout for you. Ocala Civic Theater was founded in 1950.
Oh, wow.
And, yes, something older than me. But founded in 1950, and our board has always been very interested in arts education. But it's really developed more recently into a very codified program. In addition to what we do with the schools, which I'll describe, the theater always makes an effort to have educators or administrators on our Board of Directors. In fact, our current Board of Directors includes Philip Leopard. He's our president of our board, and Joy Newkirk is another educator who's part of our board, to help us when we're working with the schools, make sure that we're making the right decisions, and that we're supporting what the schools are doing with their curriculum, rather than us trying to tell the schools what we think they should be doing. We offer a number of different things for students. We have an open rehearsal as well, which is terrific. It's a chance for them to view a play with their peers, so they enjoy coming, and it's very well attended. We have volunteer opportunities for high school students who need to earn hours for their college programs and for their applications. They can be teaching assistants in addition to what you might think of as far as being in a play or working crew. But in the summer, we have quite a few of them that can earn credits for their teaching assistance. The two programs, or three programs where we work directly with the schools are, first of all, a giant puppet company that we book in, which is internationally recognized. They've been coming almost 30 years. At the time, we moved into the facility that we're in in 1988, we actually offered four or five opportunities for schools to bring children on a field trip. When you've taken them out of the schools, then there's a small admission, but the school has to cover, or the parents have to cover, the transportation. And so, we noticed after having a number of years of the program, that the outlying schools very rarely came. Romeo, Donellen, Fort McCoy even. It was difficult because the cost of the program, even passing it on to the parents, was substantial. And so, we actually reviewed the program and thought, you know, it's time, if we can make it happen, that we start visiting the schools. So, 12 years ago, we started two different programs. One is a play that we choose that tours the schools. The topics have varied, but often, it's about bullying or diversity. Sometimes, it's just an introduction to the live theater, which some of these students may have never had a chance to experience. They, we work directly with the schools in choosing the play and letting the schools know what's going on. Joe Crowder has been amazing with helping us get the word out this year for this program. This program actually needs a stage, so it performs most of the time in their cafeterias. And it's a bit of a challenge for the schools to do all of what they need to do in the cafeteria. So, normally, we're going to be there as the very first thing when the children arrive at school, or the last thing before they get on the bus. And it's a little bit more challenging to reach all the schools, but over the years, we've averaged getting about 19 of the 31 included. That program does have costs associated with it that are the royalties, the set, the cost of the actors, because in most of our programs, our actors are volunteers. But because they have to be available during the school days, that program, we do actually pay the actors and the stage manager, plus transportation. So, in the 12 years that we've been doing the program, we've actually served 94,000 students and their teachers. And, I'm sorry, I'm reading wrong. 138,000, I'm sorry, 67,360 students and their teachers, and invested $138,000 in that program. But schools pay nothing. We look for grants, as Joe mentioned, from either individuals or foundations. Marion Cultural Alliance has been an enormous partner over the years in helping us happen. The other program that we do directly with the schools actually is a literacy program to encourage students to read. We work through the media specialists, and Crystal, I don't think is still here, but she's been a great help with letting the schools know. In both programs, we actually start by sending a letter saying, "This is what we provide, and this is what we need the schools to provide," and then allow them to sign up within a five or six-week window when we'll come and visit. The literacy program is very portable. We really would like to do it in their media center, because we'd like to connect the students with the media center to come back if they fall in love with an author and check out more books. Each year, we select a particular children's author, and then do a 30-minute program, create an extensive study guide that goes along with it, that has pre- and post-show activities for the teachers to help them prepare. And then, when we tour, we actually have a number of different teaching artists. This particular program can be delivered by one teaching artist, so a school can have us either do performances back-to-back, or we can simultaneously present, so that every child in the grade, the target grade group can be accessed. And so, that particular program, as I said, both of them have been in existence for 12 years, and we've done everything. Our very first author, of course, was Dr. Seuss. And then, we've done Shel Silverstein, Maurice Sendak, the more current Pete the Cat, David Shannon's books, Skippy John Joan books, The Pigeons, Mo Willems' books. But we've covered now a total of 14 books, because just two years ago, we actually made a change in the literacy program. We realized that we were trying to have one author target pre-K all the way through fourth or fifth. And generally speaking, authors are targeting a much smaller age group. So, now, we offer two authors, one for the older students and one for the younger students. So, the last two years, we included Roland Dahl, and this year, we did Lois Lowry's production, I mean, The Giver, which we also did a full-length production on our stage at the theater. So, the study guide that they got prepared them if they were going to be coming to see the play. It was amazing, by the way. That- Thank you for coming. -play was amazing. Thank you. I think everybody that has fallen in love with the book over the years was really a little hesitant about how do you bring this book to life on stage. But I thought that our actors did a really good job. The director that we had do it actually is very good at this particular type. We brought him in from California. He's worked with us off and on over the 20 years, but this is exactly the type of play that he does an excellent job with. So, for those programs altogether, the money that we've invested in them, which we mean investing in our students and exposing them to arts education, the literacy program and the play is 152,000. The puppets, which are a different thing, which they're bringing to us as a field trip, is about $10,000 a week when we have them in here. So, we've, in the years that they've been coming in, we've invested about $270,000, which a total is 422,000. So, it's a little under half a million dollars. And then, as far as the attendance, the number of students that we've touched, the two in-school tours total 161,000, and if you add the puppets to it, it's another 95,000. So, that's about 255,000 students that we have touched with arts programs. And all of it, at least what we do in the schools, is free. The cost of bringing your student to the giant puppet service, I mean, company, is $6. And we don't charge the teachers, and we don't charge the aides. And any school that knows that they have students that couldn't afford it are allowed to just tell us when they send the field trip that I have six kids, and we just comp them in. It's because we don't want any child left back in the classroom because their family can't afford it. Like I said, the theater and the symphony work with the schools, but also the Appleton Museum and the Marion Ballet Theater. So, I think that you'll find that there's a lot of organizations here who are committed to making sure that the students do have access to arts education and stepping up to do whatever we can to support the curriculum that's already existing in the schools. I had one last thing that was just a real treat, and I wish Crystal was still here.
She's in the back.
Oh, she is?
Shall I get her?
Oh, no, that's okay, because she can hear me, I think. Right, okay. As I said, we've been working with this one, the literacy program, for 12 years. Every year, we create this extensive study guide, and, you know, when we finish it, then it gets filed away with all the data. Well, Crystal asked me last spring, could the schools use those 12 years of study guides for their first-time program with the libraries being open in the summer? So, all of the libraries that used it were able to choose the activities that we'd already put together with all of these mostly CaliCorps award winners or award-winning authors, that they could then, on kind of a shorter planning time than they normally had, they could get a real head start on having activities for all of those kids. So, when they ask if we could use it, you know, we said we were thrilled. All of them are original. We've had them created for each of the tours, so we were excited to be able to do that. So, we're happy to help in any way we can and be happy to respond anytime Joe or the media specialists need assistance.
Thank you, Mary.
I was gonna say, you put me through memory lane, because I was an elementary teacher, and I was like, I was the field trip coordinator, and I remember picking to the puppets. I believe it was Rumble Stolkskin, and there was a couple other different ones we would attend, and thank you.
Thank you all very much for what you do for our kids. Partnerships are great. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the National Day of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust on April 12, 2018, and support the Days of Holocaust Remembrance local programs, April 15, 2018?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please give a "aye" sign.
I sent it.
You did? Very good. Thank you. Motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, and Ms. Suzanne McGuire, Director of Family, School, and Community Engagement, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation with Mayor Kent-Gwen, please. Kent-Gwen, please.
This proclamation reads, "Whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, public law ninety-six dash three-eighty-eight dated October seventh, nineteen eighty, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council has designated these dates as Days of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust. Whereas, the history of the Holocaust provides the opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments, and their efforts to overcome prejudice through education and reflection. Whereas, we remember with sadness the over eighteen million victims, of which at least six million were Jews, including one and a half million children who were victims of Hitler's Final Solution. And we remember with admiration the resistors and rescuers, known and unknown, who risked and lost their lives to save others. And we remember with respect the survivors who were sheltered, who escaped, or who were freed, and who lived to contribute so much to our community and to our world. And whereas, we have an obligation to ensure the memory and legacy of lives lost, while forever changed in this horrific event, are never forgotten, and rededicate ourselves to the principles of freedom and a just society. Therefore, be it resolved that we hereby declare this date as Yom Hashoah Remembrance Day in our community, and acknowledge Thursday, April twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, in remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust. Further, be it resolved that we pledge today to firmly commit ourselves to say never again, and to work to promote human dignity by confronting intolerance and hate whenever and wherever it occurs." And each of you has signed and dated this. Suzanne, I'm gonna give it to you. I know you want to say a few words.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members. I have the privilege, the last two years, of working with the mayor, and partnering with the City of Ocala to truly enhance the education and awareness in our students and in the community. And I am going to give this to you.
Thank you.
And ask you to say a few words, and then Ms. Barbara and I are just gonna talk a little bit about some of the projects that we've been doing in our schools.
Sure, thank you.
Mayor.
Madam Chair, Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for doing this proclamation. As you know, I think last year, we partnered together on doing this. And I've been to a couple of schools with Susie, and then we'll go to an event at Westport. And I understand Debbie Callahan's gonna come all the way back from Maine, so I'm excited about that. But, you know, one of the things that, you know, going to the schools and everything, to see the kids, how interested they were in this, and that was one of the, one of the reasons we did this, is that so that generation will never forget that this happened, so that it doesn't happen again, because there are people, you know, out there that are Jewish that think it could happen again. And, you know, some, some never told people that they were even Jewish because of that. So, I think this is important. I appreciate what you've done. There's a lot more events that you are involved in that you're gonna do. And I'm just real, real thankful for the partnership that we've created to do this, and we'll continue to do it throughout the year. So thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for involvement, your involvement in this. It's appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, and Board Members, Ms. Barbara is the Program Specialist with Secondary Curriculum. And we came up with an idea to how is the best way to really show awareness schoolwide. And we came up with an idea with possibly having our media centers do displays. And yesterday, the mayor did accompany us to Osceola, and also to South Ocala. And we have visited, as of this afternoon, twenty-two schools. And the creativeness and the level of schoolwide involvement is just, I mean, we just go there and just, and we're in awe at how much ability there is to bring it down to a kindergarten pre-K level. When we were at Anthony, and they had the fill-your-buckets, and the students knew that if you did good things and kind things, it would help fill your bucket. And if you did things that weren't so nice, it would take away from your bucket. And to the displays at the high schools, it's just been incredible. And one of the things we're doing is working with the principals and the media specialists to have some of the displays become mobile to the Sunday evening event, which will be at Westport at 5:00 PM in the auditorium there. So hopefully, everybody will be able to come out there. You'll have a chance to view a variety of artwork from our schools, and see how the children have learned about kindness, and diversity, and tolerance, and acceptance. And as the mayor said, truly, just the real history of it at the secondary level, so that they know the true meaning, and, and how this can happen, and hopefully, never happens again. And I'll let Ms. Barbara talk a little bit about the guidelines for the curriculum.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. In the days leading up to April twelfth, which is the official International Day of Remembrance, each school was really encouraged to use the campus media center to start the discussion on the history of the Holocaust by creating this unique teaching display. And it was a K-12 endeavor, so all media centers across the district were encouraged to participate. The state statute for Holocaust remembrance is actually written in a way so that children of all ages can participate in Holocaust remembrance, because the state statute includes themes like respect, tolerance, diversity, accepting other people, civic responsibility. And those themes might be more appropriate for elementary school. And then, as you move up into the upper grade levels, then you get more specific into actual events of the Holocaust. So, the use of the media center really allowed the project to involve the entire school, instead of just keeping it isolated to one classroom, or one grade level, or even one discipline. We saw many of the displays that were very interdisciplinary. There was ELA, there was social studies, art, music. Some themes that we found was, you know, the ramifications of prejudice and racism, stereotyping, being a responsible citizen, and what that actually looks like, tolerance and diversity, even protecting democratic values. That was a theme in many schools. We also saw student artwork, student drawings, the plethora of literature and books that our media centers include on this topic was on display. Artwork, poetry, maps and charts, and, and more, you know, real-life primary source documents, and different cooperative activities with book readings, and little gallery walks that students were really doing. And so, the respect and the creativity shown for the subject has really just been astounding. And our media specialists and our principals really embraced it. And each school did something that was very unique for, you know, their location, and their area, and their level. So it's really remarkable, and we just want to thank everyone for their participation. And we hope you will come out Sunday evening from five to seven PM at Westport High School, where, as Susie said, we're going to take some of the pieces from the displays at every school, so that our visitors can make kind of a gallery walk of the things that were going on in schools.
And as the mayor mentioned, Debbie Callahan-Sepper, who was the teacher who, for years, Mayor, how many years did she and you just did this on your own?
Three or four.
Yeah. And, and it was just her leading, leading the trail. And when she had to move away, we promised her that we would make her proud. And how nice, this first year that she's been gone. She's gonna come back, and she's bringing her novel. She's written a novel on the Holocaust, so she'll bring that with her to share.
Two of them have been doing a great job.
Yeah.
They've just been following along.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Dr. Mayor, you have a turnaround school update for us.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, Jennifer Beck, the Lead Principal on Assignment for Turnaround Schools. She's going to come up and lead this presentation with her team.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Mayor, Mrs. Martinez-Lopez, Mrs. Flachetter, and Attorney Gibbs. This evening, myself, along with several others, including Dr. Absher, Mr. Curly, Mrs. Hamby, Mr. Clymer, and myself, are here to provide you with district attendance and discipline data, as well as we would like to share attendance and discipline data connected to our turnaround schools. Our objectives this evening are to share data trends, and to provide some examples of that district's support the district provides to all schools. Additionally, we will be providing turnaround school updates connected to attendance and discipline. I'm now going to turn our presentation over to Dr. Absher.
Good evening. You'll notice that the data that I share with you will be in the same format as your school-level quick fact sheets and your binders, if you brought those this evening. And what we are first going to look at is our district attendance trends. These are trends for the elementary students only, so this does not include middle school and high school students. And this is the monthly attendance, or monthly average attendance, for elementary students August through March. If you'll remember, our district goal is ninety-five percent attendance, so we started off the year strong, and hovered right around that same ninety-four to ninety-five percent attendance rate. We did see a dip in attendance in January. And as we discussed what could be potential reasons for that decline in our attendance in January, we were reminded that that slight decrease could be attributed to our flu season, which did impact our schools and our attendance. And we had several students that were out for days at a time, and that really seemed to peak in January. So that's really what we're thinking most likely impacted our attendance rates in January. You'll notice that we are still on an upward trend, so we're headed back in the right direction with our attendance, and hopefully, we'll climb back up to ninety-five percent. So now, I'll share with you some of the things that we do related to attendance in the district. Each school follows a district attendance plan that's supported by the Social Work Services Department, led by Mr. Juan Lopez. And in that department, the social workers really work to support our schools engaging in database problem-solving, surrounding attendance data, looking for ways to promote attendance and encourage student attendance, and also looking for those proactive strategies, many of which are found on the Attendance Works website that has been shared with many of our schools, to look for proactive ways to have students in school on time every day, as, as our goal, most of the time. Our social workers work hard to help our schools follow the truancy manual. They do follow these procedures to engage in child study team meetings, to really look at reasons for students' non-attendance. They make those house visits, where they're in the home, checking on students, finding out what are the barriers that could potentially be removed, or those challenges that are preventing students from being in school. And they do work hard to remove those barriers through home visits, and those child study team meetings, and really problem-solving with the schools. In the truancy manual, there are also procedures that go all the way down to the level of maybe the Truancy Intervention Partnership Program, known as TIP, that many of you are familiar with. We have a court liaison in the Social Work Department that oversees that process as well, should it get to the point that our students are really struggling with attendance to the level of needing that truancy intervention And next, I'll share discipline data. And again, this will be in the same format as the school-level discipline data on your quick fact sheet. And just to kind of familiarize yourself with the levels and the information here, the sixteen-seventeen-year, end-of-year data, that's the full year for last year. The seventeen-eighteen data would be year-to-date. This data reflects through approximately April fourth. And so, some things that we can notice, as you move from Level One through Level Four, Level One infractions are really more of, they're severe enough to warrant a discipline referral, and, and perhaps a trip to the office, but what would be considered a minor infraction compared to a Level Four infraction, which would be more significant or more egregious behavior that might warrant an alternative placement or an expulsion out of school. So as you look at the range of our numbers, and you compare from year, this year to last year, moving from Level One, where we've seen a slight increase in our Level One infractions, but then, we've seen a slight decrease at the Level Two, and a relatively significant decrease in our Level Three and Level Four infractions compared to last year. One thing that I do want to point out, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we've got about six more weeks of school left, so I have a suspicion we will increase compared to last year. So that is just something that we'll need to be mindful of. And as I leave you with a snapshot of our discipline data, I'll turn it over to Mr. Curly, who will share some of the things being done to support the area of discipline in the district.
Good evening. Thank you. In looking more specifically at the discipline data, the district supports discipline at the school level in many ways. And as you can see up here, there are some specific topics listed here. These are more broad-stroke topics that we address at the beginning of every school year, and throughout the year in individual monthly meetings that we have, as the need arises, or as school-level discipline data may dictate. If you look in the next category, more specific topics at a deeper level are listed there, under Professional Learning and Best Practices. An individual example is the data-driven strategic planning. And the reason that we have this up there is there was, data indicated that there was an uptick in behavior in, in grades kindergarten through second grade. And based on this, we drew a team together of principals, assistant principals, student service managers, and guidance counselors, to put together a, a best practices team to problem-solve and troubleshoot the reasons for these. And once they put together this program, it was then presented to the student service managers and assistant principals at their monthly meetings. And this is just another example of taking proven, successful interventions that we already have existing at our schools all over the district, and then sharing them out. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Hamby.
Well, I have the privilege to share the wonderful things the turnaround school principals have put into place this year to address attendance and discipline. So the first school that we're gonna begin with is Evergreen Elementary. So if you want to turn into your data binder to look at the data that was given at the previous school board meeting in regards to the turnaround schools, so it'd be one of the data sheets in your data binder. And if you turn to Evergreen Elementary, that will help frame our conversations, or as I'm sharing, some of the highlights at each school. So Mr. Livingston, the principal of Evergreen Elementary, has really emphasized, has the making students and parents feel welcome to come to school. And through positive interactions at the school, and also reaching out to parents, through phone conversations, and also having conferences. This is a joint effort, not just with Mr. Livingston, but with his whole staff. It starts with the, the teachers, and the office staff, and the counselor, all of them working together to reach out and have that communication with parents, and also meeting with students as well, to reiterate the importance of attendance. And in discipline, they have really increased their efforts the second semester with doing proactive steps, one of them being recognizing students on a weekly and a bi-weekly basis with certificates and recognition for students that do not have referrals. So they're wanting to try to emphasize the students that were not getting referrals, and trying to encourage that is a positive trend. They also were utilizing district and community resources to offer mentoring and counseling. The, the picture in the middle there with a lunch bunch, like Mr. Thomas, he began this after spring break, where he is mentoring students, fourth and fifth grade students with a lunch bunch. And so, he meets with them every Friday on a weekly basis. And like I had mentioned, also utilizing community resources, like the Arnett House, and also the centers, where they come out and on a frequent basis. Now, if you want to turn to Greenway Elementary, if you want to reference the data in the data binder to help frame our, the items that I'm sharing. And again, I'm just sharing highlights. These principals are doing many things in their schools, but I'm just sharing a few examples with you this evening. At Greenway, Ms. North, the present, principal there, is creating a culture that attendance is important. Students are recognized on a quarterly basis. You can see in this picture, they're given treats that kids like, like ice pops and pizza and things, to help promote that culture that attendance, not only being present, but also being on time, is really important. And to help with creating the culture for discipline is emphasizing the three Bs at Greenway Elementary: being respectful, be responsible, and be safe. That is the Gator way. They talk a lot about being Gator Great at Greenway Elementary. Emphasizing these positive qualities has made a difference. And I want to mention that their business partner, Trinity Baptist Church, has also been instrumental in being a part of Greenway Elementary. They come on a weekly basis, and get on the morning TV show, and share a character lesson that is related to their three expectations of how to be Gator Great, which is wonderful. And then, Oak Crest Elementary. I'll give you time to look in your data binder. At Oak Crest Elementary, the principal is Mrs. Diane Lineback. And I must mention that there has been much effort placed in establishing procedures and developing a culture and developing a culture emphasizing the importance of attendance at Oak Crest. In their front office, if you've been there, you'll notice that they have a bulletin board where every class, the top class for having the highest percentage for attendance and also being on time, is recognized and is right there in their front office for parents to see, along with this barometer right here where they have their attendance score of 95%, and it shows where they are each day with that attendance, and that is right in the front office. You'll notice that perfect attendance certificate on the slide there, that is what every student or every class is given when they have perfect attendance. So they are recognized on a daily basis with that. And another thing I want to mention, a creative idea, is the top classes each week, not only are they posted in the front office, but those classes have the opportunity to eat on the stage in the cafeteria. That's something that doesn't cost any money, but the kids love it because that way they can have this prestigious honor of just eating up on the stage and being recognized that way. Discipline, something Ms. Lineback did is she included the staff in helping create the mission and the focus for the school. So that's where they came up with the acronym SOAR that goes along with their mascot, the eagle, and came up with what their school-wide expectations would be. And you can see the banners, they have signage all around campus and emphasize this. Also, Ms. Lineback puts out a weekly newsletter to the staff where it's reiterated about expectations on the morning show, it's reiterated, and that just helps, you know, helps the students and staff focus on what those school-wide expectations are. In addition, if you noticed on the slide, that middle picture, every classroom has a, an area in the classroom where students have the opportunity to de-escalate if they're feeling frustrated, if they're feeling angry about something, that this is like from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade where they have an area, this one, this particular picture shows like a cool-down bucket and some books that are there, so that way they can think about where they feel with their feelings and help work through their anxieties or de-escalate when they're upset. And they've had staff development, professional development, so that way teachers know how to help students with these de-escalation strategies. Now I want to turn, go ahead and move on to Wyamina Park Elementary. So if you want to look at the data binder to help frame these highlights that I'm sharing this evening, Wyamina Park, Ms. Baxley is the principal there, and she has also put emphasis into putting procedures in place and also just communicating those expectations in a positive way to the students and to the parents. Every month, an attendance trophy is given to the students in the top classes, and daily recognition is done on the morning show where classes are recognized on a daily basis. And I want to turn your attention to the signs that are in the main office at Wyamina Park, which is pretty impressive as well, that she has the school-wide goal posted there on the picture on the left, and then what their daily attendance is. So that way, parents coming in, thinking about checking out their child or bringing them in late can see what the expectation is. And on the picture on the right side of the slide, you can see where the data is shown, where it's drilled down, not just of what students, the percentage of students or the number that is present, but if you look on the far left, it's present, ready to learn, they've come on time, they didn't come and were not tardy that day. They were present, and then also that they were there learning all day because they were seeing from the data that they were having a trend of students getting checked out early, maybe to avoid the car line, who knows why, but again, trying to reemphasize that it's important to be at school all day because learning is important. And then focusing on discipline, their discipline data has, has become much better, and they've had a decrease in discipline. And I think that is attributed through their emphasis of being, following the warrior way. So we are responsible, we are respectful, and we are ready to learn, and that's emphasized throughout the day. The staff are involved on determining ongoing incentives that are done frequently with students and also just, you know, sharing ideas of, of things, of action steps to implement at the school. These minutes, they have a committee, and they have minutes, they post these, and that's what the picture on the far right, this is out in the main hallway, that way parents, staff, everyone can see the involvement and the ideas that are shared, and they're very transparent. You can see the data that's shared, so that way they can see the improvements. She also has put emphasis in having staff development and professional development, helping students to work with student conflict resolution strategies and social skills. And as a result, like I said, the discipline data is looking much better at Wyamina Park Elementary. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Beck.
All right, so kind of to bring us back together, this concludes our presentation on attendance and discipline. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. And as we look forward to the next board meeting, we're going to focus on teacher vacancies and teacher recruitment, and we would like to spend some time really discussing the district's plan for supporting our recruiting efforts specifically for our turnaround schools. So that's what we can look forward to the next time we meet together. Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, I do. Y'all getting close, not a cigar yet. Okay, now when I, when y'all come to me in a work session, I don't want to look at a shotgun version of it. I want to see if Mrs. Jones have 22 kids in her class and only two are being sent down. I want to see if Mr. Roberts have four kids, and show me what each one of these classrooms and how they're moving, and that, and then give me the total picture of the discipline. Okay, this will let me know if we have a problem with the teacher or we have a problem somewhere with that, so what, what kind of resources can the principal put into that class? Okay, I want you to tell me, when I look at other data, the class that may be having problems in reading, the class, not the school, I want to look at the class. So you tell us, say, well, Mrs. Jones indicated this month that she had three kids that was not up to par. And this is what I'm looking for when you all come to me, rather than give me an overall picture of everything. Y'all break that, yeah, let's go, go and get into these classrooms and y'all show us what, what classes are doing what, what they're doing, and then let's break it down to find out what parents in those classes are not getting their kids on time. I don't want to know that Mrs. Jones had 10 kids tardy, I want to know who they are and what we're doing with those 10 kids. See, when I look at what you all are doing, I think the only school was close, I think would be closer what I'm looking at is Oak Crest, because they, she was breaking them down, lunch on, on, on the stage for the kids, for the class that's doing things. I don't, do y'all follow where I am? I am looking, I'm drilling down now. You, you're giving me the overall picture. I want to look at what is actually occurring in the classroom. When we look at attendance, don't tell me the, the school has got 20% attendance. I want to know where the 20% is. Is it in this class? Is this is where we having problems? And what are we doing to help this class? What are we doing to help the next class? So this is, this is what I'm looking for. When I look for data on this thing, I'm looking for, to the, I'm looking at this point where we got an overall good picture, but I want to drill down. Now, we talk in terms of how this thing mesh, I saw stuff here that don't connect to me when I look at data and how we are improving. Like we talked about community activities. What are we doing to help this class get more people to come to the, to the after-school thing? We can say, well, 20 people from Mrs., Ms. Williams' class was here, but only two from Mrs. Jones' class. So what do we need to do? Do we have somebody in the district office that can say, Mrs. Jones, you're having a problem, let me send this person out here to help get those people there? I'm, I'm wanting to drill down into the data now. Y'all telling me about the attendance and all of that stuff, that's good. Now let's look at who, where, who is it, and what we can do to do that. That's where I am. You look at one, I can see a difference, I can see a difference because I can look at the data at Oak Crest and say, well, that's close. But I bet you if I went over there, she probably can tell me what classes she's having, having problems with. Okay, this will deal with, if, if we got inexperienced teachers there, we got high-quality teachers there, we would know. We have discipline problems in most cases because people don't know how to deal with kids. We have things like that. And I have to say this to you, and then I'll shut up. Ross Allen had a reptile institute out there. You know, most people didn't realize Ross Allen knew how to, Ross Allen knew how to handle reptiles, but some people jump out there and don't know what they're doing, they get hit in a minute. What I'm looking at, this data ought to tell us where we got, what we're doing and how we're moving forward, and what we, what emphasis are we putting into those particular classes. The overall picture look good, now let's drill down. That's what I'm looking for.
And Mr. James, what I will say, connected to what the principals provided to us, connected to attendance and discipline, is I do want board members to know that not only are they looking at attendance and a discipline initiatives from a school-wide perspective, they certainly are looking at it from classroom perspectives and from a student perspectives, and hence the reason that they would have classroom rewards, and some of those we may or may not have highlighted. And then certainly going back to what Dr. Absher talked about with our school social workers, and we hold what's called a child study team meeting, so students that begin to struggle with their attendance, we would then invite those parents in and talk about, is there something we can do to partner with you to ensure that your child's getting to school? And if I can highlight this in our conversations with Mr. Lopez, if I can really point out Evergreen would be a great example. So they have been really a model this year, and I throw kudos out to the counselor that's there, as well as the school social worker. They really have led the number of child study team meetings, which means they are getting those parents in there, and whether it be in person, or sometimes it has to be on the phone, trying to intercede before that attendance gets too great that they can say, what can we do to help you? Can we, do you need to get on a bus? Can we help you with that? Do you need an alarm clock? Do you need a reminder call? We do all kinds of creative things. So please know this, that those schools, in addition to all of our schools, are really working on attendance and discipline from the angle of school, classroom, and student.
Could you give me us more information, you, with PASS, we used to do PASS, what more of the students are, you have suspension shows. Therefore, as I know that PASS, it give them so many tools under PASS. So by the time you're suspending another one child, and you have so many, and this is the Level 2 ones, by that time, I know we took half of them down, okay? But you're suspending too many students at Evergreen. As I looked over at Oak Crest, and I think the same was going on too, and some of the teachers do, not teachers, some of the parents do say, I say, well, where's your, where's your student at? Well, suspended him. And I said, I think PASS has more, more tools for those students. If we could just look that, I want, give me the data to show how many of those students really was suspended or they went to PASS, because I think that can help them so much better than suspended, whether any, not one student should be suspended, because PASS has too much, the tools, they have all the tools. So if you can, and I know it's not what you did, and I know you've been working, doing what you have done, that's your job, but I just want some more, more information to say, we're using sus, 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 suspense, excuse me. Thank you, you know, but you're doing that, I think we should be using PASS, positive PASS, it's something, we have so many tools there.
And Mrs. Boynton, if I could clarify, the data that you're looking at on our quick fact sheet would have been the number of incidents, so.
I know that, yeah.
Yeah, so an action may have been out-of-school suspension, but I know especially at our turnaround schools, that they are working to creatively come up with other solutions that would include PASS, that may include after-school detention, that may include some other creative consequences to keep those students in school.
I, I understand what, I understand that, but I think PASS really is the, is the tool that we should be for, when you have all the overturn, over-around schools. I think if you know, I mean, we used to have the data, and by the time you get that, the data down, as I looked at it, I was going to say, and is it better? Oh, we're getting worse. Right now, it's flat. It's not flat, so that means we're not doing, we're not doing so much work on the students under that. So just, just give me some more data, and I know you're doing, I mean, you're doing for all the schools so much better, but I just, I just want that, okay? Thank you so much.
One thing that I'm hearing, and I've heard from the teachers, and I guess in the staffing plans I can see it, that we have really diminished our number of behavior techs and people, the behavior specialists and that sort of thing, to, to go in and help some of the teachers. And one thing that they've told me, it really helps having Ms. King on the board being an educator, because she is our only educator when Mr. James goes, I mean, she's the person that, that keeps, that keeps me understanding what's happening in our schools. And so, you know, and I bounce some of these, these things I don't understand off of her, she can help translate for me a little bit, so I can ask the proper questions. And the behavior techs and the behavior people are just not there in the schools to help them, and what happened to them, where are they, and why are they gone?
So we still do have behavior techs, and we still do have behavior analysts that work in our school system. Those individuals do support our ESE students, so our students with our exceptional student education, our students with 504 plans. So our administrators have been apprised of how they can access those individuals. And really, the primary purpose of both of those folks would be to come in, obviously would be to kind of see where the struggles or the concerns are in the classroom. And sometimes it's as simple as doing a classroom reset, which a classroom reset might be even how the classroom is physically structured. It also might be encouraging some additional PD for school or staff, and then it might also be giving particular or specific strategies connected to students.
But is it, but my question is, is it true that we have less of them?
I don't know, so I can answer that question for you, but if asked the question, do, do we have behavior techs? Absolutely, we do.
Do we have as many as we used to have?
I cannot answer that question.
I'm told that we don't, and that the ESE, that it's real, they're filling it in the ESE students. So I guess then I'll have to ask for whoever has those numbers for me, to get those numbers for me, the texts that maybe we had two years ago versus the number we have behavior texts today, and the behavior specialists versus what we had two years ago, because there is, there's something that I'm, that they're seeing in the schools that they need that they don't have. They don't have the assistant with, assistance with behavior issues that they did have, is what they're telling me. And so I will wait for those numbers to see what we had two years ago versus what we have now. So I put the word out, so whoever's in charge of collecting that data for me, would you let me know? Thanks.
It would be me, and we'll get it to you.
But can I say, when I'm looking at the number of incidents, in most cases, other than Level 1, they are going down.
And here's really, well, and here's what I would like to highlight, so if we could bring it back to our student services managers, particularly those in our turnaround schools. So we have fully equipped those turnaround schools with a, and in many cases, we've supplied them with two student services managers. We have a great team standing behind me that has really invested in the development of those student services managers. And I think because those schools are putting a strong emphasis on discipline and really working to be proactive instead of always being reactionary, which is why we are beginning to see movement on a reduction in those overall discipline referrals, especially at that Level 3 and Level 4, which would be much more at that egregious level, so.
Okay, now, are we seeing less referrals reported? Or are there more referrals that aren't reported? That's the question. You know, I'm, I'm hearing from teachers that there's issues You know, I'm, I'm hearing from teachers that there's issues that they can't report. And so, um, I guess I just need to flat call me, call up some teachers and absolutely talk to them about, are we still telling them they can't report certain referrals? They have to do three incidences and get whacked for that three times before we can have an official referral?
So every school has a procedure for discipline. So I'll go back to when I was a school-based administrator. So certainly, one of those things that would have been included is parent contact. That's an absolute must. Having been a dean in the past, I'm not going to be the first contact. As a school administrator, I'm not going to be the first contact. I want to make sure that we've provided opportunities for our families to get involved, to help desist us with discipline. So going back to, does each school have a process that they would utilize and that there would be certain expectations in place? Absolutely. So that if a referral has to be written, then we know that we have taken steps to work to desist that behavior in the classroom. We've had opportunities to involve the parent or the guardian, and yet we're still seeing that behavior continue. I'm going to be honest, I have not heard reports from teachers that they have a concern with writing discipline referrals. So I would also encourage them to reach out to principals on assignment, either through email, phone, or when we're there on campus.
Okay. Ms. Boynton?
Help me for a second, okay? I would like, as I look for volunteers, if I look for everyone, we have at least today in Evergreen, they have sixty-two. But if you look at the hours, it's very low for any of the volunteers to come in. So how can we change that for our volunteers? If, if you look just for seventy hours, and you began to look over at Oak Crest, then you will see it has about over thousands. So how can we do that? Through the parent engagement? Should that come back again and come around and bring, and see what's going on? Because that will help, I think that will help if you have a volunteer right at that school to help them, you know, too. So it can do, so you're on that, you're on that.
And I think, and possibly that could be one of our upcoming sessions. Possibly we could talk about volunteers and family engagement. Would that, would that work? So we might be able to, are there any other questions based on attendance and discipline and the information they've given us tonight?
Ms. Beck, do you understand what I was asking for?
Yes, yes.
Okay, now, and I'm gonna repeat this again. I heard everything you said. I understand about the various, various schools have different rules when it comes to discipline. But by the same token, I want us to drill down into, into those classrooms, because it should be there. It should be there. If one teacher's writing X amount of referrals, then we need to know that and what we can do to help them. I want us to drill down into the, the numbers that y'all have given us. I want it to be to each individual classroom, boom, boom. When you come before us, you can say, just go through all the ones up, and just tell them about the ones that's not meeting expectation and how we can help them. That's what I'm looking for. And all the things that we're talking about will come out in those numbers.
Okay. Ms. King, did you have anything?
I do have a question. It's kind of in regards, not kind of, it is in regards to the discipline. You know, since the incident in Parkland happened, there has been discussion about the Promise Grant, and that that county received money when they wouldn't, you know, work with the students and didn't report things. I am curious as to if Marion County receives money for any type of Promise or other names. Can anyone, I don't know if DEMA or you would be familiar with that?
I cannot personally speak to that.
I'm not familiar with the funding that you're speaking of, but I know there is talk of funding coming down to help with preventative actions and mental health and that sort of thing. I think we're still working through how we put together a district plan for that, but I'm not sure if that's the same thing.
I don't think that's what Mrs. King.
It's not. I'm, I'm, I want to know if Marion County receives any money, any federal dollars for when we, I don't know what I'm trying to say.
To encourage us not to stand.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for. Like, is there a work? I think there was something like a work to lieu or something, work instead of time. I mean, I know, I think I've heard rumors or something, but I don't have, you know, I don't know exactly what it would be. But I'll let you guys research it, because I'm, you know, I'm just kind of curious if Marion County receives any money for us not writing.
That's what led to the problem in Broward with the boy, because he was not, fell under that Promise Grant, that we won't punish these kids, we just kind of let it slide, and we'll just kind of hide it. And that's the reason we had the incident that we had, because he was let slide. Because of the Promise Grant.
I'm not familiar with any of that, but we'll definitely research that and get, get a firm answer.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Very good report.
Ms. Beck, you and your team did a fabulous job with the parameters that were provided. I'm confident that you'll be able to meet these new parameters as they change a lot. Thank you.
All right. Chair, I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy only, a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirement.
Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, we do. Michael Farrow?
Good evening. My name is Michael Farrow, last name is spelled F as in Frank, E-R-R-O. My address is thirty-six seventeen Northeast Nineteenth Place here in El Cali, Florida, three, four, four, seven, zero. Leading, uh, chairman, superintendent, and members of the board, I will be straight to the point. I'm not here not only as a concerned parent, but also as a member of this community in response to the growing trend of threats towards our county schools. I ask myself, who else would take it upon themselves to try to put together some heartfelt words with the sole intention to inspire others? These words that I say tonight, I don't direct them towards the members of the board or our teachers per se, for I feel that they are doing the best that they can for the safety of our students. The words that I say tonight, again, I don't direct them towards our, towards the, towards the members of the board or our teachers per se, for I feel that they are doing the best they can to ensure the safety of all students. Having no other outlet, though, I felt that tonight's meeting was the only place where I could hope to reach others in the community. First, I speak to parents who have students in our schools. From one parent to another, I implore you not to just watch over your kids, but to talk to them, support them, and to let them know that the doors of communication are always open, no matter the topic. Love them and nurture them, but also give them room to breathe. I also want to speak to the students that I hope are hearing and watching this. If any of you are experiencing some sort of trouble at home or at school, issues with family members or some of your peers, and are just too afraid to talk about it, please hear me. Please hear me. You are not alone. I say again, you are not alone. Find an adult to talk to, whether that is a school nurse, a teacher, a counselor, the principal, or even a police officer. Someone you would feel comfortable enough to talk to. Please remember that you are also important, and that violence towards yourself or towards your classmates is never the answer and never will be the answer. If you are hurting, finding the right someone to talk to is the right step and the first step towards healing and getting rid of that pain. It may take a moment to get the words out, but once you start, everything else will just flow together. Lastly, I speak to the other students out there that I hope are also watching this and listening, specifically to those who are old enough to know better. I speak to the copycats and the pranksters. I ask that you please hear me, listen to my words, for again, I'm not here to judge, but to inspire. We all know how fun and powerful social media can be. But as fictional Uncle Ben Parker once said, with great social, with great power comes great responsibility. I ask you to please be responsible with your social media profiles in regards to our schools. It is never funny, nor is it cool to declare a fake threat to a county school. As you likely know by now, there are serious consequences for these actions. One day, you students will go on to have kids of your own that will attend a school somewhere. So I implore you, for one moment, think outside the box and consider their future. Would you want them to go through what you may put you and your fellow students through? Please make the right choice, not just for you, but for yourself and for everyone. I ask that before you joke around, before you act to intentionally hurt others, to please stop, think logically, and remember my words here tonight. By doing so, you could save lives, including your own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow. Thank you. May I have a motion to receive the public input prior to board approval of the 2017, 2018 textbook titles for adoption of four specified courses at a public hearing scheduled for May eighth, 2018? Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Superintendent?
This public hearing assures compliance with Board Policy 4.21 by providing an open, noticed public hearing to receive comments on recommended materials prior to adoption. The vote on the adoption of 2017, 2018 textbook titles will be during a public hearing at the May eighth, 2018 school board meeting.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to provide input on the 2017, 2018 textbook titles for adoption? With that, all those in favor of the motion to receive the public input? Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda item C-12.1-C23.2, including revised administrative 2017, 2018 salary schedule under item C-19.1, and with the exception of item C-13.1, the district staffing plan, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion? Moved by Ms. Boynton. Seconded by Ms. King.
Yeah, yeah, we're here.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 district-level staffing plan? Have to have a motion before we can discuss.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
We can discuss it.
Second by Ms. Stacy. Ms. King, you withdrew this item.
I did. I did withdraw this item this evening because I have concerns, and I will be voting no on it. One of the concerns is the guidance and the assessment department will be growing. This evening, and originally when I had wrote and written a few of my notes down, it was that we hadn't even heard from our Golden Apple Teacher of the Year, when she came to us back, I believe in the end of February, to express her concerns for the amount of testing that her students are seeing. She did come before us tonight, and she did tell us that her students, that their anticipation has withered. She also used the word drudgery. And she basically told us that her students have lost their love for learning, because they're not learning except for other than what she feels is taking a test. So my concerns is that if we do approve this, then we are already, then again, we're going to be making this program where they have a lot of testing. I showed you guys this a few weeks ago. We're third graders, this is the third grade testing. And even though you see some lines here, and some of them, they might be ELA and science QSMAs, where they're ninety minutes long each. And then among other testing, this is just from the county and the state. This doesn't even include what the teacher may have to assess herself. So as a board member, I am not comfortable supporting a department that has already, I feel, affected our teachers. And we haven't, until tonight, actually heard from them. And she did tell us that, you know, we're over-testing them. So if what we have in there now, and the people in that department can create and come up with this many tests, and they do a great job, but if we add three more people in that position with the clerk and the extra person, I'm, I'm not, yes, I am not comfortable at this point doing that.
We changed that, though. Mrs. Stacy, yeah, we had dropped it to one, and that evened that out.
Oh, no, they're still added. There's still one there, and then there.
It was supposed to be adjusted per the board workshop. That was supposed to be adjusted, Mrs. Stacy's recommendation, the discussion she had with Mr. McGowan, was to drop it to one, and then we would revisit it as needed. Correct, Mr. McGowan? So that should have been adjusted.
It was adjusted, but I'm not comfortable voting for the one.
For the one, okay, understood.
Because we are inflating that department, and we already had the Teacher of the Year beg us to stop testing as much. And a couple other concerns I have is, in this staffing plan, we will be adding an executive administrative office. There'll be another person under the deputy superintendent. We will also be promoting two directors, two executive directors, and we will be adding the three area directors. I understand that by statute, we have to add the three area directors. But we will be adding six high-paying positions that will grow the district east larger. And we all know that the classroom is where the manpower is needed, and I am seeing an administration that is growing. And I'm uncomfortable asking our voters for a referendum tax when we're growing our administration and not focusing on the classroom. So tonight, I will be voting no.
Mr. James, do you?
I have some concerns as well. And my concern is I don't know what the total package will cost. And when I look at these things, I'm, I'm looking at the various things, but I'm also saying this to you. In order to get me to vote for this, I need to have a flowchart where all these people are going and who their supervisors are. And when I say area directors, I have no problem with the area directors, but I do know I want to look at how much that costs. And when I say cost, I'm looking at, one, they're not going to be down at the district office. And when I say cost, I'm looking at, one, they're not going to be down at district office, so how much is the build-out? I'm looking at the executive secretaries. When I say executive secretaries, I know that we are adding that as a part of the plan as well. If you got the directors, and they got, I see three executive secretaries here, I want to know what, I want to know what these costs is. I want to know what the cost in reference to a build-out. I want, I want to call your attention to the fact that we went over there and put a, a bill, we started over there with childcare with a bill, and we ended up with a $600,000 bill, and I want to know how much all of this will cost. I want to know who, I want to know who the flow, I want to see the flow chart of these people. I want to know who's going to be on first and their responsibility. I did get a chance to look at the executive, executive administrative officer today, and I really appreciate that. I really don't have a problem with that, as long as I know what we're getting and who's on first and who's on second. I want, I want, I want a flow chart. I was looking at, at the beginning of this thing here, I was looking at what we were doing with student discipline, alternative learnings, alternative learning, student services. What do we, where are they going? When we have problems out there, when we have problems out there, if we do not have a student service, where do they go? Do they go to the district? Do they go to the district? If a parent have a problem, who do they deal with? Do they deal, they don't, do they still deal with Dr. Absher, or is there somebody else that they deal with? I want to know these things. You know, I noticed that we put community and family service under Title I. Now, when I look at Title I, and I look at those people that's working at Turnaround School, I'm thinking Title I people should, and if she's working in that area, they need to be working on how to get parent involvement with the schools. I know that we, we have a lot of things going on outside where we put up a few signs and stuff like that, and that's wonderful. But I'm thinking that family, family and family and community engagement should be geared to what we're trying to do with these students and with this, with our school district in terms of moving these scores. I'm thinking that, and I'm thinking again, what are we doing with this? Are we saying that we want to improve our parent involvement in our schools, and should that be the main focus here if it's going in the Title I? Because that's what our Title I dollars are, to improve the struggling schools. So that's what I think of that. When I look at that, and we talk in terms of, of the Title I and the community and family service, they have a social worker, they have a couple more people down there.
Specialist.
A specialist. Do all that energy go-
And a coordinator now, and a coordinator now.
And a coordinator. I want to know who's supervising that.
Dr. Butler.
Okay, and I want to see a flow plan saying that, and I want to see what they're doing over there, what they're going to be doing, because I want a clear picture of what is occurring with the staffing plan. Okay, now, what are we doing in terms of discipline? If discipline is being restructured, how are we doing, what are we doing with that?
Dr. Grantham, come on up.
No, Doc, I don't need you. All I want you to do is just give me a flow chart with it, and just show us where it's going.
Okay.
And so I don't, I don't want, I don't, that's all I want. But what I'm going to tell you right now, I want some numbers before we put this thing out here. I want to look at a flow chart, and I want to say who's on first, who's on second, this is what they do, and then I'm ready to go. But I'm not ready to go with this, and I will say, Brenda, I really appreciate you getting me, give me the tape, because I listened to it. I listened to everything that was said when I was not here, and I will tell you, it was some good conversation. And being on, being in the bleachers listening gave me some second thoughts about what we're doing here, and I do know, and I feel very strongly, that we need to know how much all this stuff is going to cost us, because I'm looking at program specialists and all of that stuff, and that look good, but how much it costs? And that's the bottom line to me.
Ms. Stacy.
You know, I enjoy having a discussion and hearing Mr. James' thoughts about this. I guess my concern, which this just kind of heightened my concern, is that for some reason, these people would do stuff as a director, and they, but somehow, to do it next year, they have to be an executive director, or they can't do the job. I don't understand why, we don't really have that many additional people that we've added to the staffing plan, but we've elevated a lot of people, you know, clerks to secretaries and bookkeepers to secretaries and directors to executive directors, and we've taken these people, and I really would like to know, Ms. Boston Ellis, if you could tell us. And until I really sat down, when I got home from the, from the workshop and thought about all the people, we don't, the bottom line doesn't show a whole lot of new people, but what I see on the bottom line, I looked back through it, and we've got elevated positions, we've stepped people up. I would like to know what that position costs us today, and when we move it to an executive director, if it's $2,000 a year, $5,000 a year, what's it cost us when we move that up? So that I see where these same people that were doing the job for this money, now next year it's going to cost us this money to have that same person to do it, like even the area supervisors, they were principals on assignment, they were paid at one level, and now they're going to be paid at a different level, but doing kind of the same job, because they really were over schools, but now they're going to be officially like in the area. So I don't understand why that requires more money to be in the area than working from the fishbowl to the area or whatever. I don't understand why it's that much more expertise that it should cost us that much more when we have, when we have art teachers and different things that just want art supplies to be able to run their classrooms, simple things. So I worry about not having the little money, because we're sending the big money out in salaries. And so I really would like to have that, Ms. Boston Ellis, the people that we've taken and we've, that worked at this, at this level this year, and then next year they'll be doing the same job, kind of, but we just moved their title. I mean, it's almost like we're Santa Claus, you know, like we're, it's, it's Christmas in April, we're just giving all these people raises off the taxpayers' backs, and it's all fun to give your, your employees positions, and, and everybody feels happy and feels good about you, but somebody's got to pay for all that, all those presents and the Santa Claus. So that's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Mr. James, yet?
And again, I'm occurring, the thing I'm saying about the staffing plan, I want to know where everybody is. You know, I just want to know where they're going, what they're doing, and I just, I just want to see a flow chart to say he's, she's working under here, this is what they do, and this is what I want. And when I, and when I think in terms of what we're talking about here, the guys, I know one thing, and I was listening at Mrs. Kelly King on the, on the tape, and she said, she was talking about what happened if the, if the avalanche don't pass, what happened if there's another hurricane come through and hit something? And I'm telling you, they said, what's it going to be, 13 this time? I don't know. And five of them is supposed to be pretty severe? And if some, and we have, and we start getting a little, getting kicked around a little bit, we're going to have to spend some money, and I want to know what we're doing. And that's what I'm saying here, more than anything else, and I want to know how much them offices is going to cost us, because I don't want to know $600 thing, $600,000 thing floating up here, and we don't know nothing about it.
Well, can I clarify that the salaries that we're talking about are not for next year? The staffing plan is for next school year, the salaries are for this school year, so that is, is, that's to be clarified.
Well, that is for this year, I understand.
Okay.
But I'm looking at the, we're, we're moving these people into-
Gotcha, like up a grade, understood.
And I, and that concerns me, that part of it.
Ms. Boynton.
Okay. You know, our community, they trust the school board members with, for over $500 in our budget, okay? They trust us, but if the community looks, the first thing we see on the newspaper that we have the bus drivers, we have a short-
Storage.
Storage, storage.
Storage.
Have concerns, okay? That concerns me instantly that we're going to get the area directors, that are, that is for the trans, for the buses, so I said, I can't vote for that right now. I think we need to, to really, I used to think, I, I used, every day we used to get this, I thought, this, my first time, I want to say, I need the names for every, under the, my staffing plan, that you already have the names, put that down for me, I-
But we, we won't put the names down, because we don't know who's going to have those positions.
Some of them you do, don't you? Right? Okay. So, so with, we have 50, 51 schools, public schools, right, with four turnaround schools, and I think that this, we have an ineffective school, this plan, staffing plan, because we should, the money should be in our classes and our teachers, not up to the administrators, because we, if you looked around, if you looked at the beginning, you have, now we have five, 10, that's like about, that's 25 right there, and by the time you go, it's the money is going up, not down to the teachers, not to our, to the other employees, you know? I think that this staffing plan should change these three-area district to zoom, a zone manager, adjust that to a zone manager number three. I mean, I understand that, I know we have a number one and two, if we have another three, do we have that? You know? But I don't think we need to have, to say we have directors. I think we need that one direct director for, for the bus, and I think we need to, we should be looking around solving our problems in our, in our schools. We have to look around that, it was, we had an session about how many years we had an session, when we didn't have the budget, it was very low, and we had, we even, even the union with the buses, they said we will help, and we would not, but they, the money went down, and it's down. And now, all of a sudden, it would, three directors instantly, and that union would be able to say, wow. So now we want a referendum, and what we're saying to them, to the, to the community, that we have, we have all that money, and after a while, and I know we need that, I know we need for music and art and PA, and, and, you know, we need all that. So I want us to, I want us to come back, but I can't vote for this. Thank you.
Can I say something on administrative staff's behalf?
Yes, then it will be my-
I would like to say real quickly, we did go through this with our, with our staff, we did have a workshop, and maybe there was just too much to digest, you know, we, they gave us a couple of workshops on it, maybe it was just a little bit too much to digest, and we, we need another look at it. I know that, at the end of the day, it'll be a good thing that we had this very deep discussion, Ms. McCall, even if we have to go for another round, because the public needs to see that we are doing everything we can to be good stewards of their money, if we're going to ask them for more. And I believe that Ms. Mayor can relate to how I, to what I'm saying, that the more we rehash this, the better the county's going to feel about it, and if board members are not comfortable, I'm not really comfortable, and if I have any concerns at all, I feel that they should be resolved. And let's just make one more stab at this, but I do appreciate the time y'all answered a lot of questions, you made some, you made some, negotiated with us last week, but maybe there's just a little bit more negotiation we need to do and to get the bottom line on this. So thank y'all for what you did last week, but I feel we still need a little more help here, okay?
Okay. So I want to first express that I do have a concern, and I've expressed it with Dr. Grantham and Dr. Ham, I do have a concern about the funding of this staffing plan. However, I truly believe that this administration was voted in for a culture change. And what has happened, if you've ever been in an organization that's had a large culture change, it takes a while to tweak it. I have been at Monroe Regional Medical Center. Usually what happens in a culture change, and I, I don't want us to talk about people in this staffing plan, because we need to be talking about positions in this staffing plan, because the people are going to change. When you have a, a pretty significant culture change in an organization, things happen, positions are changed, things are tweaked, and usually the first year or two are pretty chaotic with all that culture change. Because you go in and you make these changes, and then you have to look to see where do we need to tweak, where do we need to make the changes to best fit what we want to do in this organization, to move this organization forward? I personally like the staffing plan, because I think it is taking the culture that we are establishing. Did change happen quickly? Absolutely. Too quickly? Possibly. But it did happen, and now we need to go back and, and look at the change that we made and tweak it. I think this staffing plan, moving the area directors, going back to an executive director of secondary and, and elementary, I have no problem with that, because when I look at this, I can see the flow chart in my head, but I can understand why a flow chart would definitely be necessary. I think it's important that as we look at the budget for this, we do have to think about those numbers and the people that, that will be hired for these positions, where they are on that. My concern is, can we afford that? So I have no problem with the staffing plan because, because of the culture change and the tweaking. I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a concern about affording it. So if we need to see a flow chart, if we need to see the people that are going to be in those positions, where is that going to take us with the budget? I think that's a big question. Can we afford that? But I think we have to be careful about getting into the mire of things when there's people out there in the field working and organizational chart they're working with. So I think a lot of this is because of the culture change, because it happened so quickly, things went out, and now they're going back and they're tweaking it. And so I'm not looking at people right now, I actually looked at these positions and went in and looked at, at the salary ranges of these positions, and that's where my concern is, is can we afford this? It has nothing to do with the organization, the staffing plan, in my mind, but can we afford it?
Like, one thing I'd like to add to this, and, and help me, I know Ms. Hamby is working on this, but I still feel that I want to hear something on the Listening Tour about, I just would like to, at some point, all that Listening Tour where she had a chance to go out and talk with these teachers and all this stuff, you know, I want, I want that to be part of something. You know, we've already fixed the budget, and somebody come up, and then we hear some of, something from this Listening Tour. Can that be part of, part of the process that we work our way, so we can hear, hear some of the stuff that was said out there on the Listening Tour?
Well, it's important. Today, we had our listening, we listened to our Teacher of the Year, who was silenced a couple months ago. She wasn't allowed to come before this board to tell us that, hey, there's a problem. She was denied that, but she did come here tonight, and she told us, that's in the staffing plan. So I consider that, but I agree, Mr. James- Mr. James, that we should know what, um, the concerns of the teachers and our principals and our staff, what they, what they think we need also.
I think they already have it. Y'all, you all have completed the listening tour. Have you all heard what they said out there? I haven't. All I want is for y'all to give us up on the listening tour. And that could come, when y'all bring this thing back, give us a little overview of what they're saying out there. That's, that's what I'm saying.
So what I'm hearing is, we wanna table this, not vote on it. You wanna table it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gibbs, do I have to make a motion to table, or can?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion.
Does she need to make it, or do one of us need to make it?
No, I need, I'm gonna ask you to please, somebody to make a motion to table the staffing plan.
I make a motion to table the staffing plan.
Can I ask that you table it to a great specific place?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the next board meeting, we should have all of our answers, correct?
Well, at our next work session, do we have enough time? Because didn't we have?
We have stuff that's other.
We have, yeah.
No, it cannot be that.
We might have to, um, call a special work session.
We've got a lot of stuff. We made, we, I think we do, we've got.
To deal, to deal with this.
Or split up some of the stuff we have on that work session.
Well, we've already moved it, because we, there's other stuff that came up.
Some of the stuff had to be moved, but maybe we need, we just have too much business to do, just work every other work session.
Everybody, please pull out your calendars. Hold on, I, I turned my phone off, so I'm letting it. You don't have your calendar?
Yeah, but it's.
Ms. Flotketter, how far in advance do you need?
Just set a new session?
Yes.
Give me eight, nine days.
You're talking about special call work session?
Can we just work all day on, on May the third? What do you think?
Not May third.
Not May third? Oh, no, we have to do that, that's all right, that, yeah.
We have a.
I'll do a Saturday.
Saturday.
We have the external operator interviews all day, all day the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, let's, let's do a Saturday, guys.
Yeah.
They play, you go to football games, all that stuff, I was saying, let's play, let's play big tag ball here, Saturday.
I can't get May fifth, my daughter's graduating college, and that's the Wednesday I can't.
April twenty-eighth.
What day is that then?
A Saturday.
Let's go for it.
All right, let's do it.
Can we do a Saturday, Mr. Gibbs?
You know what, though?
That's gonna be.
Here's the prob.
All the staff has to come in.
The staff has to come, and that's unfair. That's unfair.
Well, that's unfair. We don't, we don't want them to come.
Because they're required to do a lot of things outside of ours, and for us to add.
We have lots of open Wednesdays, don't we?
Well.
We don't have a board meeting on Tuesdays, I mean, except for everyone a week.
Mr. Gibbs, do you have Wednesday, the twenty-fifth? We have an employee prehearing, but.
We got a nine-thirty prehearing, and, I mean, that's all, I don't know how long it'll take.
Can we do an afternoon workshop on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Dr. Mayor?
See, this is where I'm put on the spot, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna be wherever you guys decide, but I'm actually in the schools and visiting things, and I'm gonna have to cancel events, but I will cancel it based on whichever day you all pick. So whatever works for you all.
Wednesday, the twenty-fifth at one o'clock. Ms. Boston Ellis?
Thank you. Um, I would like some kind of a clarification. What are we costing out? The existing staffing plan, or some?
Just from director to executive director, just give me an idea how much we're bumping up, like these people that we've moved in the staffing plan.
I thought we did last time, didn't we?
But.
We, we have information, but I, it's not to what she's asking for. So I'm just trying to get a clarification of what you're asking to cost out, because we're in the process of actually costing out the entire budget. And we have made some cuts in department budgets, and I think I shared that with some of you, but, um, I'm just trying to make sure I have, um, clarification.
These positions where we've gone from, um, we've taken, like, whether it be coordinator or specialist or whatever, and we've changed that position, we've taken that position out, and we've moved it to a, a different level, a director to an executive director, where it's really kind of the same job, the same people, it's in the same category on the staffing plan, but we've just taken, we take the director away, we say minus one, but then we put an executive director, that kind of stuff. I just wanna see how much it's costing us to go from one to the other.
I just wanna make sure I understood what, what I'm costing out.
Yeah.
Yep, and combine it. So with all the new positions, if we can have, uh, the total amount of what all these combined positions, if we were to vote yes on this, what the actual.
And don't give me, like, at the beginning of the pay scale, show me where they're at on the pay scale now, and where that same person would be on the pay scale of the executive director. So, so if they're on grade, grade ten years on director, then I don't wanna know what grade ten years is on executive director.
Correct.
Or if they're gonna move up another, if they're gonna be bumped to another level. I just wanna know, like, apples for apples, as we've taken away a position, but we've put something else in, what is that change costing us when we add it all up?
And, and I, I think that's all of our question is, what, what is, what is gonna be the overall budget impact?
Thank you.
Okay?
Ms. Ellis, would you ask Dr. Hamm about those three positions out there, where, where they going, and how much it gonna cost to, to get?
We're talking about positions that no longer exist.
We're talking about the area, where, where they're, the buildings they're gonna go in, and what, what do we have to do to retrofit it?
We won't have to retrofit. Dr. Grantham can speak to that, yeah.
Do we know where they are?
Pretty much.
We might use, like, MTC campus, or Fiddler, something like that. Ms. James, I told you this morning, we have not chosen any building that you have to add any construction to.
Okay.
Already current offices that we own.
Okay. I understand that. I don't care if you came in this room right here, you had, you gotta do something to it. That's all, all I'm asking. You know, and I understand that we talking MTI, and we looking at all those, but if you go into an empty warehouse, you gotta do something to it. And that's, it's okay if they tell me that they gotta put some chairs in there, because I think you gonna put some chairs in there, right? And you probably have to, uh, get some kind of computer hookup of whatever, right?
The tech people have to go out there and put some electrical stuff in.
Okay, y'all know what I'm asking now. I'm not asking you, y'all gotta build a new building. I just wanna know what you got, what's gonna happen.
What's it gonna cost to get those offices up and running, is what we wanna know. Okay? So, the motion needs to be to table to the May eighth board meeting.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to table this meeting until the.
Staffing plan.
The, oh, the staffing plan until May eighth.
Okay.
Second. Second by Ms. Boynton. Motion by Ms. King, second by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please signify by voting aye.
Aye.
And then April twenty-fifth at what time?
April twenty-fifth at one o'clock, until we finish. And I'm hoping that we have all of our questions, so that we can vote on a staffing plan on May the eighth, so they can get busy, okay? Alrighty. Motion passed? Motion passed five, zero. All right, may I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Seventeen hundred dollars to Bellevue High School from Wrestling Boosters, one thousand dollars to East Marion Elementary School from Circle K, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars to Eighth Street Elementary School from Dave Carter Associates, one thousand dollars to Forest High School from FHS Athletic Boosters, four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Fort McCoy School from Cactus Jacks Two, Inc., five thousand dollars to Fort McCoy School from Community Foundation of Calamarian County, twenty-five hundred dollars to Fort McCoy School from their business partner Adena Springs Sleepy Creek Lands LLC via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, twenty-five hundred dollars to Marion Technical Institute from their business partner, partner Century Link via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, one thousand dollars to North Marion High School from an anonymous donor, twelve hundred dollars to Westport High School from the National FFA Organization, three hospital beds valued at seventy-eight hundred dollars to Westport High School from Ocala Health. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James, second by Ms. King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye. Those opposed, vote nay. Motion passed five, zero. Mr. James, I know you love to do the thanking, so I'm.
Oh, yeah. I like a good, I just wanna say once again, when I look at the donations that, that's come in, and, and the fact that so many people that's out there that really help our schools, you know, I'm saying this on behalf of all the students out there that are affected directly and indirectly by your donations, and we really appreciate it as a school, uh, board, and as a school district, because it really make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. James. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, April nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at eight o'clock AM. The purpose of the work session is to review annual health insurance, two thousand eighteen, impact fee indexing calculation, hiring procedures, employee infraction and disciplinary actions, and the IEP audit. Additionally, an attorney-client session will be held at the end of that session. All right, we will now have board, uh, comments and concerns, and Ms. King, we will start with you.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna begin with, last week I attended a soft skills meeting that included our juniors and seniors. And, um, there was about twenty-four of them, and I want to, um, acknowledge Mr. Mark Bianello, as he has done an outstanding job, uh, trying to enhance what he has already started with the soft skills. Um, we did have a, a committee meeting, and, um, it was suggested that we bring the students in to see what their thoughts were, you know, about how we could make the program better. And they exceeded our expectations. And when we were there, it made me and probably all of us that were in there realize that many times the solutions are right here. We don't have to hire out, we don't have to look out, we don't have to be creative. Sometimes we just have to look at the source and realize the solutions are here. And, um, also, Ms. McCall, I wanna thank you for personally inviting Ms. Hoteling to come before us tonight. Um, it was very important that this board here, what our teacher of the year had to say. So I just wanted to extend that thank you to you, and that's all I have for tonight.
Stacy?
I would like to talk a little bit about our hiring practices. We have a board policy on what we require when we hire a principal. We have a job description, a board-approved job description, a board-approved policy, and we have the criteria that we expect to receive. We have six principals, um, as a, a few weeks ago, when I spoke to Dr. Hamm, that do not have the principal endorsement or certificate that is, our district has added to their DOE certificate, um, which in the past has been required. And I have asked every principal that I can come in contact with, to include here, in an open meeting, I was asking principals that came through our system if they had that on their certificate, and they, and they did, but there are six new principals that do not. Um, I have asked why, and I've received some information that, well, you know, most districts allow a year and this and that. Well, I contacted the certification department at the DOE, and I spoke with Ms. Hernandez, and she said that, no, most, there is no most, and there is no criteria that you just automatically give a year. It's whatever the board policy says. And that is the way the people are supposed to be hired, is based upon the board policy and what it says. Since our board policy has not been followed in the hiring practices, and, and when I approved employees to be hired and principals to be hired, I made the foolish assumption that the administration had made sure that they qualified to be a principal in our district based upon our approved board policy. And I asked the, um, the lady in certification, she said, she said, well, there, there's different reasons school boards make these policies, to require these certain criteria, so that they get experienced principals. She said, a school board can vote to have, to not, not require these things, and, and have basically just what the DOE requires, I think, which is that leadership certificate attached to it or something. But, um, some, she said, but then again, districts, um, want to make, sometimes it's kind of taken a chance to bring people in that don't have the proper endorsements to their certificate, or the proper experience, or the number of years as an administrator or an assistant principal. It's kind of taken a chance to put them in charge of a school, 'cause you might not find out till a little bit later that they really weren't qualified to be there. And so that's the reason school boards do have these things, these requirements. And so, um, I don't understand really why the, the superintendent's, um, staff chose to totally ignore board policy and not even come to us and ask us to change it, which I really don't support changing the policy. I believe it's been in place for a long time to get experienced principals. And, um, and we do have, you know, a lot of inexperienced principals, you know, with, with limited years of experience right now that, that we know we have. So from here forward, I want staff to know that the principals that we have already on staff, that when they are reassigned for next year, I will not be voting to support any principal that doesn't have, that does not meet our board-approved job description. And so, don't bring me a principal that doesn't have it from Timbuktu, wherever y'all might go to bring people in, if they don't have it. Because this board member will, um, approve what this board's policy says. This is not, you know, this isn't the Mr. Grantham policy, this is the school board policy. And I fully expect that every principal that you bring before me, I want attached to that document their DOE certificate, so I see that they have what our school board policy requires. Thank you.
My turn. First of all, I just wanna thank Brenda, and Brenda for giving me the information that I needed, and I really had, I really listened to, to the work session. It was long, but I listened to it, and I got some really good stuff from it. One of the things that stuck out, that, that stayed in my mind was the speaker, and she was talking about, um, the girl could make change or whatever, and that, and that was one of the things that, that I was talking with you, us about as we do career, or we do something. And I brought this up, uh, a few board sessions ago, where we need to bring people in and let those kids sit down in a room with people that have, that are in those professions, and, and tell them what they need to do in order to. and tell them what they need to do in order to, to be successful in that business. And that was one of the things that I picked up with at Santa Fe, was how they would bring business people in as part of their career day and sit them down and say, this is how much you would need, this is what, this is what you would, this is what you will make, and this is what you will need in order to make a, make a living at what you, or what you wanting to be, whether it's a nurse or whether it's a plumber or whatever. This is how much you make, because they had a real live plumber there telling them, this is what, this is what you will spend for this, and this is what it is. As we make this turn and get ready to start up for next year, let's look at some of the things that we're learning, the things that Ms. Stacy is bringing up. Let's look at these things because we're making the turn and coming around, and it's time for us to do it again. Principals are important. I did get the impression from listening at that tape that we really don't need any principals out there if everything is going to go to these district people because I don't know, I don't know where to go. If a parent come next year and say to you, I have a problem with the principal. Okay, do the principal in turn, if he can't resolve the problem, then he go to the district person, and then it go up to the superintendent's level. I say, I need to know all this. And as we get ready to, to really start our school year over again, I think we need to clean up a lot of this stuff because all of this stuff works. All of it connects. When I say it connects, I'm saying that if you put a principal, or put a director over there, and you know, give him a secretary, there's something wrong. If you give him a secretary, it gonna take something from somewhere else. As we go through this process and we look at what we're talking about, I want us as a board to remember all of these things connect. You know, we cannot say we got this person over here working at music and it's not connected to what we're trying to do in the classroom. So I feel very strongly that everything that we do need to connect to our general purpose. You know, I look at a lot of geographic, and you have that big octopus down there that have all those different hands floating around all over the place. You notice they got one central thing that they're working with? And everything is designed to feed into that. And I, and I'm gonna say this again, we need to go back and look at what our strategic plan say too in terms of what we're doing to make sure that we're on the same page and we're moving in the same direction. This is where I am with this because I know we're making the turn. And I'm gonna say this to you, rest assured, next year, this time, I won't be here. The end of that. And that'll be good for somebody. Okay, that's where I am. Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Well, Dr. Hamm and Dr. Mayer, they did a happy birthday. So I just wanted to say it to you, happy birthday to both of you. And I saw that what they gave you. They didn't, you didn't come over, Dr. Hamm. So, but it was beautiful, so. I have got some email for our community and about the Florida Marion County Audit Operations. I want them to say, at the back of it, there is a letter from our superintendent. So if you wanted to, just looked around and say everything's okay. Because they didn't see the letter, okay? So that's, that's the only thing I talked about. Thank you.
Last evening, I was at Bellevue High School to help judge their senior projects. Mr. McGowan was there, there were several. Ms. Boston Elson was there, Mr. Vianello was there, several Mr. McAtier. It was really great. And Principal Kelly does an excellent job of tying their senior project to a career focus. His goal has always been that when they walk across that stage and get that diploma, that they have a plan. And these senior projects allow them to think about their plan. And every senior has to participate, and it was very well done. If you have not ever judged the Bellevue High School senior projects, I suggest you call Mr. Kelly and do it because it is truly wonderful to watch these kids, even those that are very, very nervous and maybe not quite as prepared as they should be. But they have thought about what comes next. And so I applaud Bellevue High School. I went down Saturday to the literacy fair. It was very successful. Our, our children had a blast. I commend all of our schools and our departments for the tremendous creativity that you had with the book that you chose to showcase. So thank you all for the very, very hard work. It was very well done. Also, I invite you to the Student Media Festival on Friday evening. I will be there as a presenter. Mr. Christian, I believe the elementary schools start at six o'clock. Start at seven. And we do that fast and furious, everybody clears out, and then in comes the secondary schools. It's a fun night at Westport High School, starts at seven. Oh, I have it all wrong. MTI, seven o'clock, Friday night, the Student Media Festival. And that's all I have. Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
First of all, I think the most important comment of the night, happy birthday, Mr. James.
Oh.
Oh, it's your birthday?
It is, today is his birthday. And guess what you got? It's a cinnamon roll. No cupcake for you, a cinnamon roll. This girl remembers, yes.
Happy birthday, Mr. James.
Yes. It's a cinnamon roll.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Now I can live with that.
Okay, awesome. You enjoy, sir, and it's all for you, you enjoy. We want to thank Officer Berry for being with us this evening. It's always good to see you. And I want to thank you and your fellow OPD for Saturday. They were with us at our literacy festival, but in a very unique way. Scheduled at the same time as our literacy festival that had over 72 different tables and booths and books and just hundreds and hundreds of children that attended and families. There was also going on at the same time, there was a second amendment walk, march. I'm not sure, we'll say walk for that. And these people were carrying handguns, as is their right. So OPD lined the sidewalk, just in case, they lined the sidewalk right in front of Citizen Circle for us in case the walk came on this side so that all families would feel safe. But to commend those that participated in that walk, they stayed true to their word. They stayed on the other side of the parking garage and just did their thing. And there were about 50, you said, 40 to 50 of them. And again, it was a great day to be an American because on this side of the parking garage, we're doing the first amendment, on the other side, there's a second amendment. So it was like a big Bill of Rights Day. So, but thank you all for being and just making us feel safe. So, and then we understand that you're reassigned, so you may not be with us anymore at these meetings. So, but you're always welcome and we'll miss you, but you've been a great asset to us. Thank you so much. When you each arrived this evening, Dr. Grantham was at the door passing out these yellow bracelets, and it's a kindness bracelet. Now, Marion County Public Schools has been participating in the Kindness Revolution since 2015, and it just recognizes students for random acts of kindness, and I guess recognizes adults as well. And with this bracelet, the idea is that when you encounter or participate in a random act of kindness, to give your bracelet to the person that had that act of kindness. And so you would grow your bracelets. So thank you, Dr. Grantham, for sharing that. And those were shared this weekend at the literacy festival as well. Ms. Horn gave us our updates on different professional development. We're very excited. This upcoming Saturday is our K-2 Boot Camp, and that's Saturday. And we have 160 teachers that have signed up. And I just want to commend them because they, our K-2 teachers have asked us to provide the same awesome professional development that they heard our 3-5 teachers were getting. And Ms. Horn and her PD team turned that around for them. And so 160 teachers will be here on Saturday, and we're so pleased again. Ms. Horn has provided stipends for them and lunch as well. We've got some pizza coming in the afternoon, so we're very excited about that. We also have a book study coming up with Ditch That Homework. Now, we are doing it as a moodle, but we're going to have a first meeting in person and an ending meeting in person so we can have this in-person discourse. But we've got 23 teachers signed up for that, 14 elementary, six middle and three high. And we are loaning the books out, and then those who complete it will be put into a drawing for a $150 gift card to be used for materials with them. And so if any of the board wants to join us for that, please do. But that first in-person session is April 12th. Oh, and we just found out Matt Miller, who is one of the authors of the book, is actually going to participate in that first work session virtually with us. On that April 12th, he will be with us virtually, and his goal is to be with us again on May 17th for the wrap-up so he can have some interaction with the teachers participating. So we're very excited about that, too. As of today, of our staff, 6,464 staff total have completed the child abuse training. And that number hit me pretty hard today, and I just want to give kudos again to those who've taken this very insightful training. Because last night on the news, as I was watching the news, there was a teacher in Seminole County who was arrested for not reporting child abuse. The teacher had no part in the event, but knew about it and did not report and was arrested. And when they're interviewing the Seminole County Sheriff spokesperson, she was, she was quite adamant, as are we, that we are mandated reporters. We do not have to be able to prove it, just have reasonable suspicion of it, and we are covered under the Good Samaritan law. In the Seminole case, though, he knew, he knew and did not report, and so he is arrested. So again, we're just keeping our teachers safe, and just, that just broke my heart, anyway. So with that as well, we, you know, we do more than just put up signs for our vets. We really engage them in not only our classroom, but in events. This upcoming Saturday is the Quarterly Memorial where the names of veterans who have passed away in the last quarter, so this would be since January, are read. And again, it's more than just a trivial ceremony, it's something that is so respectful, and it honors the sacrifice of our veterans. And this is the first time that Marion County Public Schools will be reading the names. That's pretty powerful. We have only over 50 of our staff who have volunteered to read names, and that will be happening at the Veterans Park by the library on Saturday at 10 o'clock. And with the different Purple Heart ceremonies, each school is embracing it and personalizing it. And when we were at Emerald Shores Elementary, one of our veterans followed up with this email to Ms. Houston, the principal, and he wrote a, he did a handwritten card to her, and he said, "I was a platoon leader and executive officer of a signal company in the U.S. Army during pre-Vietnam and early Vietnam War days when veterans weren't held in high regard. Only in recent years have I received occasional handshakes and a thank you for your service. I have never received public recognition. Your program finally made me proud that I am a veteran. Thanks," signed Harold Allman." And I think that shows that there are just more than just signs. Kevin, you've been nominated for an award, and we're so proud. The media award? Yes, yes. So, and Kevin, of course, gives kudos to everybody. He said, but it's a district award, but Kevin, the district would not be nominated for the award if it wasn't for you. The 2018 Communicator of the Year Award recognizes individuals and organizations for communications and public relations efforts that have enhanced community awareness, understanding of, and support for causes and issues that make a real difference in our community. That sounds like your job description. And so we will find out April 26th, but I guess it's like an Academy Award. It's an honor to be nominated and so proud that you are the face of this award. So thank you for everything you do for us. And I know sometimes the news you share is not so pleasant, but so often it is, and you make, you just make a difference to our kids. So thank you so much. We can't fail to recognize that former Superintendent Leon Rogers passed away, and his funeral was Monday. We had a great representation from our district, and I want to thank the staff that did attend. I was out of town with a previously scheduled engagement and could not attend. But so many of our Donellen family went, so many of those associated with Donellen and Vanguard did go. I was honored to be able to know that man, if only for a brief time. And the wisdom that he shared with me, I treasured those visits that he and I had after I met him at the Kingdom of the Sun Basketball Tournament. And he echoed pretty much what Ms. McCall said earlier about changing culture and just steering the course and remembering that when you're doing the right thing, everything else just kind of falls into place. And that change is not easy, but it will come. And again, that you can sleep well at night when you do the right thing, so. The book, and I'm not, I'm not gonna read it, but the book is Little Prince. And it goes back to something that I guess Mr. Wilson and I spoke about earlier, is about the classics and not, it's, recently, there hasn't been the emphasis on reading the classics that we should have, and I think that's going, well, I know that's going to change with our new K-5 reading adoption. Thank you, Board, for approving that. But I'm trying to go back to just read these classics that so many others have shared and have read. And this one just touched my heart, and it was written in 1943, which, when you think about the topic of it, it's, The Little Prince is actually an alien that lands on the planet, and he's just trying to find his way home. It's a little bit like E.T. to me, that's the connection I was making. He just wants to go home to his planet and his tiny flower. And the theme of the book is about looking beneath the surface. And I thought that was really deep for the time. The book, to me, it was a little difficult to read the structure. And again, it goes back to 1943, but the sentence structure, I had to go back and read it a couple times for understanding. But it was a pleasure to do so. And one of the quotes just, just really hit me where the little prince says that, "It is the most difficult thing of all. It is far more difficult to judge oneself than to judge others. If you succeed in judging yourself correctly, only then are you truly a man of wisdom." And that just, with the current events of what's been going on, that just resonated with me, and I just wanted to share that. And I would love to share this book with anybody who wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs, do you have anything?
Mr. James, I wanted to share with you, Mr. Vianello sent me a text that we are doing exactly what you talked about in our high schools at our career expos, that they are actually taking people in. Over 800 students have gone around, and we have community business people in there talking about their jobs and what it takes to have their job and the salary they'll make, so. So I think you mentioned that last year, and I think he heard, and so they are doing that at the career expos. We have two more coming up, correct? Bellevue High School and MTI?
That's a different, that's a different.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, all right. So we just wanted you to know, they are, they are doing that, Mr. James. So, okay.
Ms. McCall?
Before we settle business, I need clarification on the homework. Because a couple weeks ago, I thought Ms. Grohlak came before the board and basically said, to know better is to do better, and that we would be looking at that next year and that we would not be, have the no homework policy. Did I misunderstand that?
Because we got a home, because you were talking about the homework book. I think it's caused some confusion.
The no homework.
Yes. But we're not, we're gonna be having homework here next year.
Homework is only, the no homework policy is only for K-5.
Right, but we talked with, we had a board workshop about the fact that we do need to bring some of it back so that the parents know what's happening in our schools and everything, so.
I think parents can understand better what's happening in schools without bringing back traditional homework. I took the board's recommendation on being, with more information on what like projects were and how to do those, so.
Maybe we need a board policy.
I think, yeah, I think there was a misunderstanding. Because I, I left that we would be, that teachers could decide if their students needed homework or not, whether it be math or wherever. I think we were, that was my understanding. And I thought I remembered her words as to know better is to do better. Did you guys feel that way?
I felt like.
Okay, so.
I can promise you, my grandson in fourth grade has homework.
Well, then, that.
So we need to make sure that it's okay for the teachers to do it, though. We need a board policy on homework, it looks like.
I'll make sure, I'll get something given over to.
Okay. Okay, Ms. McCall, we need to, before school gets started, we need.
Okay, Ms. McCall, and we, we need to, before school gets started, we need to work up a workshop on homework, and we'll, we'll get a board policy on it.
We'll have it up.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. James, please.
These mothers want something, and if she's saying they're not going to have anything.
All I'm saying is, guys, somebody said to me one, and I ain't going to tell you what somebody said. What I'm saying, we didn't take a, a board policy to get it out. So we don't need a board policy to get it back in. We need to have a consensus where we sit down and discuss.
Whatever it takes.
Right, because we're writing a board, you write a policy, it's also a trap you too, so.
That's true. So we can just have a consensus.
Yeah, well, I think.
We just have a discussion.
You know, I think that that's already going on, so.
It's not supposed to be. It's not, I mean, maybe.
And teachers can get in trouble, they told me.
We don't want the teachers to feel guilty about it.
Well, a policy, you know, we have another.
I mean, my grandson has had spelling tests that he's had to study for, he's had vocabulary tests, he's had book reports, he has had science projects, so he is still having homework.
Well, there must be misunderstanding, because many teachers, and we even received a letter from teachers, you know, their concern was that they could not give homework. So, we probably need to clarify that for teachers.
So what we need, we need clarification, so.
Right, because I thought they could have it, but then Dr. Mayor showed the book that said, "Ditch the homework," and like, they're still going to require, so I'm getting a mixed message.
To me, it's just a book study.
Right, but what I'm saying, if there's a mixed message, because it means one thing to you and something else to me, that's happening in our community, and that needs to be clarified.
I think they had one.
Well, it would help us, too, if we would know where the complaints are, and it would help that we would know it, so we could solve that prior to just a board meeting, to say it, that you're getting the emails, which I'm, which I'm not doubting that you are, but we can't help when we just get told that there's emails or whatever, and it's very ambiguous and anonymous. We can't help. So if we get the details and we get it before a board meeting, we can address it, and then please do hold us accountable, but allow us the opportunity to solve the problem and not just try to ambush us at the end of a board meeting. That would be helpful.
No one is ambushing you. You come up with the most wildest accusations.
Okay, ladies, it is very late, we still have board things to, so I think we need, I think we need clarification with communication on that clarification out to our teachers. And I really think it's that simple. So I think that we can, we can handle that at a workshop, and talk about what, what is homework, what can they, what can they do?
Right.
And have clarification on it.
Right. And there were, I remember Norvella Haynes came before this board, all of us, and she brought up homework. So there's no surprises here. I think, again, we're going to let it go.
There are no surprises, and Norvella and I had a conversation, and I explained to her that here's, here was what I understood about homework, because my grandson's getting it. And I talked to the teacher, and her perception was the same as mine. So, I think it, I think it comes from the school leadership and what, what the understanding is, and I think it's simple to clarify. Sometimes we try to make things harder than they really need to be, and I think this is one of those things, that we can clarify and, and send out a message.
Well, they've had homework since the beginning of time, and it hasn't helped, so.
Dr. Mayor, I, I think this discussion is over.
You said it doesn't help, but teachers say that.
This discussion is over. I think we talk about clarification and move on. So, discussion is over. Before addressing expulsion matters, Mrs. Stacy, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through March twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. eighteen dash sixty-four, J.D. eighteen dash sixty-seven E., J.D. eighteen dash sixty-eight, J.D. eighteen dash sixty-nine, J.D. eighteen dash seventy, with educational services, through the remainder, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, and the first semester of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. eighteen dash sixty-five and J.D. eighteen dash sixty-six, without educational services, through the remainder of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, and the first semester of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year?
Aye.
Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Mr. James. There's no discussion. All those in favor, please vote aye. Motion passed, five zero. Before adjourning, I want to thank Mrs. Martinez Lopez. This is her first evening sitting in this chair. Thank you, and you did an outstanding job. Thank you very much. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Okay, aye.
We're waiting for it to pop up.
It's going to pop up.
What do we do about our schools' secretary?
What?
Secretary, yeah.
We're going to, we're going to get it put on there. He's got to, because we ran out of time.
That's okay.
He had the presentation to the nineteenth.
Okay. Okay.
Can we just verbally say aye?
Yeah, but we got it.
All right, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-seven.